Right, it's our first amendment to protest, to have a peaceful protest whenever and wherever we want. Mr. Erdogan, I cannot take away this, my right as a Kurdish from Turkey. This happens in Turkey, shouldn't happen in Turkey either.
We have five seconds.
As an American citizen, it's not acceptable. It is not acceptable.
So, Drizel Jussumi, I want to thank you for being with us in Rukun.
I think you need to see the video.
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 I didn't know there was difference. Okay, I'd like to call a meeting to order for the Pacifica City Council for Monday, May 22, 2017. First off is called order, roll call please.
Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Vodorlos?
Here.
Councilmember Degri?
Present.
Mayor Protam Keener?
Here.
Mayor O'Neil?
Here.
Next is a salute to the flag led by Sue Vodorlos.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty or justice for all.
Okay, closed session report.
Full action.
Okay, next we have a special presentation and it's a proclamation for Pacificans care. And are there people here that are representing Pacificans care that would want to come up to the podium or? Come on up, don't be shy. Camera doesn't bite.
Please work.
All right.
Actually could.
Could, okay. All right. I see a lot of familiar faces. Okay, the city of Pacifica, county of San Mateo honors and commends Pacificans care for their continued support and assistance to Pacifica Resource Center. Whereas Pacificans care established in 1982 by a small but dedicated group of Pacificans who accepted the challenge to assist and support essential locally administered service agencies in order to build a broad and higher quality of life for Pacificans is an integral and valuable member of the Pacifica community in many varied ways. And whereas the highly respected and appreciated efforts of Pacificans care include the ongoing essential support and sponsorship of Pacifica Resource Center. And whereas the efforts of Pacificans care to help keep Pacifica community that cares includes such activities as raising funds to support local social service organizations and projects that serve the community, from children and families to seniors, including fiscal sponsorship and many grants to support numerous community projects throughout Pacifica. And whereas Pacificans care is the only Pacifica organization solely dedicated to supporting social services in Pacifica and sponsors many important and worthwhile activities that add to the betterment of the Pacifica community, they have also established themselves as caring partners and supporters for the work done by the Pacifica Resource Center. And whereas the Pacifica Resource Center staff, board of directors and clients wish to bring added attention and express gratitude to the members of Pacificans care for their service to the community of Pacifica and to the Pacifica Resource Center. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that the city of Pacifica honors and commends Pacificans care and their members for their ongoing support and advancement of Pacifica Resource Center through a variety of services and sponsorships that enhances the ability of Pacifica Resource Center to help make Pacifica a more healthy and compassionate community by serving those who are perhaps less fortunate and are struggling to maintain a good quality of life. Done this 22nd of May, 2017.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor O'Neil and councilmembers. That was really beautiful. Thank you so much. And it's really a wonderful honor to be here tonight to accept this proclamation. And I'd really like to extend my gratitude to all of you and the city of Pacifica and to the Pacifica Resource Center for extending, you know, an ask for a proclamation. It really is very special to all of us and it means a great deal to our board to receive this proclamation. As you may know, that Pacificans care was started in 1982 by many engaged Pacifica residents that saw a need to address and assist. They saw some incredible nonprofit organizations in the city of Pacifica that were doing some very important work on behalf of our community members, our families, our seniors, our children. And I'd just like to acknowledge that we are raising funds for a variety of core agencies in Pacifica, including of course the Pacifica Resource Center and Pacifica Youth Service Bureau and Pacifica Senior Services and the Pacifica Child Care Services. And there are, we all as a community understand that together we can do so much more than we can on our own. And as the people back in 1982 and for all the years until today have understood that together we are so much stronger and they've passed the baton on to new board members. And we are just very grateful for the acknowledgement and the partnership we have with all of you. I know I've seen many of you at our fundraising events and you're committed as much as anybody. And we're grateful for the work that you do. And we hope that we can see you in some of our future events. We have a fundraiser coming up on November 4th, the Speakeasy Night, which is a time where we raise a significant amount of funds for these organizations. So again, we just really want to thank you for the acknowledgement and the recognition. Want to thank the city of Pacifica and Kathy O'Connell for the work that she does on these proclamations. She does a beautiful job and happy to be here and thank you again. And I don't know if anybody else has anything they'd like to say. I'd like to just acknowledge that we have a board here and we also had the Pacifica Resource Center. Many people from the Resource Center came to share in this recognition and we deeply appreciate their support of our efforts. Thank you. I'm going to be so bold to ask if we could do a picture. We would love it. Thank you.
Okay, did we want to do council comments first or Sue Degri?
Of course. Right, Pacificans care is very aptly named regarding all the board members, all of you and those that come before you and also reflecting our wonderful community of folks in Pacifica. So thank you very much for all the very hard work that goes on all the time. Nice to see you, former mayor. You look extremely relaxed.
John Keener?
I just said way to go and keep it up. Thank you.
Deirdre?
Thank you for all your work. Pacifica is a lot better place because of all of you. Thank you.
Sue?
I always enjoy myself at the speakeasy, running around, having a good time. So thank you all for everything.
It isn't always the speakeasy.
Thank you.
Sometimes it's other stuff too, right? You know, and so, no, I have to admit, they do, the Pacifica Resource Center does do a wonderful job. They have some wonderful people there and they have helped a lot of people in Pacifica and they do a really good job. So thank you very much.
Pacificans care.
Pacificans care.
Pacificans care too.
Yeah, they support the resource.
Yes, true. Just making sure.
Anybody else want to speak from there or?
If you also like to say anything. I'll be good.
She's going to take it with her camera.
Take one together and then we'll come in after. Yeah, take one all and then we'll join you.
Okay. One more.
Okay.
Next is the, thank you very much to Pacificans care. Next is the consent calendar. Persons wishing to address the council on any consent calendar item may do so at this time. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Those wishing to address the council on any item listed on the agenda should submit a speaker card to the city clerk. Items on the consent calendar will be adopted by one motion unless a council member or person in the audience requests before the vote on the motion to have an item discussed. Time limit on comments is three minutes or less. So, John?
I have a few questions about item number five, the consultant agreement for the housing element implementation.
Did you want to remove it or just has question, are they brief?
I think, I think they're brief questions.
Okay, let me just check with Sue. Sue, you have your light on?
Yeah, I wanted a statement about four and five.
Four and five, okay. So John, I guess go ahead. Your question.
Did you have your light on?
No. One, one item in the, in the staff report, it mentions supportive, supportive housing by right. And I think by right is actually meant to include the whole thing, amending the zoning ordinance to allow emergency shelters, transitional housing and supportive housing by right. Could you, could you fill us in a little bit more on what that is?
On what by right is? Sure.
Well, and supportive housing also. I think the other things, I have a good picture of what they are. Page 40. And yes, I'm not sure which page I'm on, 56.
Sure, my name's Tina Wermeyer-Strom, the planning director. And so first I'll just start with by rights. State law requires that certain types of housing, including, or temporary housing, including emergency shelters, transitional housing and supportive housing be allowed by right within, within certain districts. And the city can establish those regulations. And what by right means is that they don't require a land use entitlement, they're not discretionary use in whichever districts the city decides they can go into, typically residential districts, although not necessarily for emergency shelters. And supportive housing is just a definition of a type of housing that provides some sort of support to the residents, that they may need counseling support, addiction support, that sort of.
Okay. And so, once this is approved, and we're not approving this tonight, we're approving a consultant to assist us with the housing element.
Right, so what I can explain is that every eight years, every city is required to update their housing element. Their housing element contains policies and a, an action plan that the city says to the state, to HCD, that we will implement this action plan.
HCD is the?
Sorry, the State Department of Housing and Community Development.
Right.
And, and so what this contract does is hire a consultant to help us do that. And so the actual zone, zoning amendments that would be needed, for example, to implement the zoning change that you pointed out, would go through the regular community input process. It would be public hearing, it would require a planning commission review and recommendation to city council and ultimately city council approval.
Would that zoning ordinance be something of the sort where, you know, you establish a special category for these emergencies, emergency shelters and transitional housing and so on? Or would it be something where you establish specific sites within the city?
It could go either way. So cities do it differently. I think that with emergency shelters, there's typically a location or a general location that those go, but cities do it in all kinds of different ways and we would be able to pick the method that's right for our community.
And so we would be able to, for example, pick a method that, say, we would establish a general, you know, zone, zoning category for emergency shelters and so on. And then later on, be able to say, okay, that specific piece of property that somebody wants to place an emergency shelter on, we'll rezone that to the emergency shelter zoning category?
So the law requires us to select where that will go, that could go now. It doesn't bind the city to not, to allow it in other locations. So if we get a proposal that may have found a different site in the future, it doesn't bind the city from considering a zone change to allow that in that location in the future.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
And Sue, you had four and five?
Yeah, so for, just stay there a minute, I'm just going to say something about four. Four is about fireworks and I want to thank everybody that worked on that, both staff and community. I think the community at large will appreciate that, very hard work and movement forward. So appreciate that. That was for number four. For number five, the one that councilmember Keener was just talking about, I had several comments, questions. I'm happy to hear about the fact that this will be open forum and plenty of time for the public and the council to, to discuss things. And request that it not be at 11 o'clock at night because sometimes these housing elements have come at the 11:00 PM or later. And so far the city has a decent record of above market housing, but our affordable, moderates and lower is pathetic, fine, well, maybe I shouldn't say that, but definitely wanting, so I would really want to watch out for that. I think that's, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
And then I did have one card from the public regarding item five.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council. I am Tiger Jastrell's Pig Stick of Pacifica. Actually the same item that councilman Keener brought up, on mine it was packet page 61, Name a Program: Amend Zoning Ordinance to Allow Emergency Shelters, Transitional and Supportive Housing. And I want to excuse myself from the beginning because I go to a council meeting and some things occur to me after the time in which I can make comments is passed. And then I get to, if it means a lot to my heart, fester on some of these ideas for a while. So if anything comes out in a way that, you know, some of it's just me getting stuff off my chest because if I don't, then it eats away at me. And so I apologize because really what I prefer to do is make constructive comments, not destructive ones. So I'm going to go from there. So in the status of that program implementation, what it says is city staff engaged in in-depth analysis of rent stabilization and just cause eviction programs during the reporting period in response to city council direction. As a result of the significant staff time dedicated to rent stabilization throughout the reporting period, staff was unable to develop the ordinance required by this action program. Telling me that we would be closer to an ordinance about emergency shelters and transitional and supportive housing under different context of city conducting business otherwise. What occurs to my mind as ironic is that over the last half a year or so, we keep talking about making housing affordable for people and yet we're not really mentioning affordable housing, aside from saying that we're not going to talk about it yet. It seems to me like affordable housing is the most likely sustainable way for us to find a solution to the housing crisis in this community. It seems like we should loudly, loudly be rallying people toward the affordable housing solution. As a member of the service industry, in an industry that does not yet pay us a living wage, for me the answer is not going to be the ordinance. If it should go through, it's going to be affordable housing or figuring out a living situation with multiple others. That being said, what I read about placeworks seems that placeworks speaks the language of being a well-balanced, even-handed and good choice. As a result of the significant staff time dedicated to rent stabilization throughout the reporting period, staff was unable to develop the ordinance required by this action program." Telling me that we would be closer to an ordinance about emergency shelters and transitional and supportive housing under different contexts of city conducting business otherwise. What occurs to my mind as ironic is that over the last half a year or so, we keep talking about making housing affordable for people, and yet, we're not really mentioning affordable housing. Aside from saying that we're not going to talk about it yet. It seems to me like affordable housing is the most likely sustainable way for us to find a solution to the housing crisis in this community. It seems like we should loudly, loudly be rallying people toward the affordable housing solution. As a member of the service industry, in an industry that does not yet pay us a living wage, for me, the answer is not going to be the ordinance. If it should go through, it's going to be affordable housing or figuring out a living situation with multiple others. That being said, what I read about Placeworks seems that Placeworks speaks the language of being a well-balanced, even-handed, and good choice. And as I was reading through it, I was kind of curious what work they've done for the Girl Scouts of America. So please vote yes on that one. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the comments I have. Is there any other public comments that wish to speak on the consent calendar? Any other comments from city council? I need a motion. Sue Vadois?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, vote. Okay, the consent calendar passes five-zero. Next is oral communications. And this portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during oral communications, provided, however, that during the oral communication portions of the agenda, only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. Council members shall not enter into debate with speakers under oral communications. A maximum time of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker pursuant to Pacifica Municipal Code Title II, Chapter 1, Section 2-1.118. Any person making impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks, or who becomes boisterous while addressing the council, shall be called to order by the presiding officer, and if such conduct continues, may, at the direction of the presiding officer, be ordered barred from further audience before the council during that meeting. So everybody gets three minutes. First off is Bill Collins, and then Jason Francisco and Tiger Big Stick. Bill Collins?
Good evening. I wanted to suggest that maybe at some point, council could consider the sequence of your agenda items. I've long found it strange that the most important thing you do, your voting, is the last thing you do. The last thing on your agenda occurs late at night. You may be getting tired. The public may be turning off their TVs, both of them. You know, it's just, you've got information items that are not action items, that are generally dealt with earlier. And I wonder if you'd consider flipping that, just as a general rule. It doesn't mean it always has to be that way, and the items can't be moved around. But I remember years ago, there was a applicant in the audience. He had a permit pending. And public comment was really long that night. There were people singing songs. Sue, you may remember this. And by the time they got to this applicant, the mayor said, you know, it's pretty late. Do you want to come back another time? And this guy had sat here for three-plus hours. I was kind of embarrassed that that's the way Pacifica does business. And I, I realize everybody wants their items up first, but generally, it seems to me that the voting is the main reason why you convene as a council. It's why you're here. It's not just to share information. And that may be worthwhile, but that could even be done in writing. So please, at some point, consider whether or not items should be adjusted based on what you think the public is here for. You know, recently, we've had people here on rent control, and dispensaries, and Highway One. And I think, my guess is, that's why most people come to your meetings, is they're interested, they're affected by how you vote. And again, that's coming late at night. Not that that's what you want, but that's how it ends up being. Thank you.
Okay, next, Jason Francisco, Tiger Big Stick, and Steve Patton.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'm Jason Francisco with Pacifica Community TV, known as PCT. I'd like to invite you to PCT Honors, which is happening Friday, June ninth, at the Mildred Owen Concert Hall. Doors open at seven PM, and admission is just twenty dollars. So reserve yours by calling us at six-five-zero-three-five-five-eight-thousand, or contact us online at PacificCoast.TV. So it's a very special year for us this year, because it marks our fortieth anniversary. So it's gonna be a very special program. And honours this year include Anita Reese, she's back there, Linda Jonas, Morning Nichols, and Larry Passmore, just to name a few. So again, please help us celebrate such valuable community members here. Again, that's June ninth. That's a Friday night, seven PM, at the Mildred Owen Concert Hall. Six-five-zero-three-five-five-eight-thousand. Thank you for your time.
Tiger Big Stick, Steve Patton, Monica Olson. Tiger?
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor and Council. I am Tiger Jastrow's Big Stick of Pacifica. Thank you for hearing me. It really, really, really bothers me when I hear a councilperson say that they don't understand the cause-and-effect relationship they have between what they're doing and how it affects the community they serve. Especially when talking about something as all affecting as rent control. When I cast some of my votes, I do not cast them because I do not think rent control, under any circumstance, is a bad idea. I think that conversation is worth bearing out. And up until recently, I have been looking forward to seeing the results of that conversation. And I don't know how it winds up playing out. I don't know that the way that everything has been happening isn't exactly what is best for our community. No crystal ball. I don't know. And I hope it is. I vote because I hope it works out that way. And even though I've had sincere reservations about how it's been playing out, it doesn't undermine my sincere hope that it works out best for all parties involved. But what y'all do affects what happens in the community. At least eighty people, eighty units, not people, more than eighty people, at least eighty units that I've confirmed had rents go up to the tune, some of them six hundred bucks, probably more, let's say a hundred by now. I don't know the exact number, at least eighty. In my humble opinion, I don't think those landlords should have done that. Wouldn't have been my choice. I'm disappointed they did. But to divorce oneself from the idea that their actions aren't connected to what other people in our community are doing, I think undermines what is trying to be accomplished. It is more difficult to establish any connections of trust if we are not first acknowledging our own cause-and-effect relationship between what we are doing and the effect it has on all parties involved. Thank you.
Steve Patton, Monica Olson, Suzanne Moore.
Mayor and councilpersons, I am the Executive Director of the Pacifica Ocean Discovery Center, community project here, to build an ocean discovery center on this property that we're on now. And since the, since the library is, has been bumped from the corner of this property as a project, at least for now, we asked that the Ocean Discovery Center be considered for that site. As you can see on this, on these handouts, there's, there's, it shows the pipe that was laid with, under the pier, that bring, would bring fresh water, seawater in. And being slip-lined with another pipe, the water would go back out. So it would be a circulating seawater source. And that pipe is, has a value of one and a half million dollars, according to the California Coastal Commission. And you cannot build any other, you cannot lay another pipe on the West Coast of the United States ever again, according to them. So I would like to ask for a study session of the council on this matter. And I would like to know if the, what the status is on the EPA cleanup of this site, and whether it was signed off on, and what that status is. We got about a hundred signatures in three and a half hours at the Earth Day. We shared a booth with Skyline College. And letters of support, signatures of, of support. So it's still a positive project that will bring visitors to the area. I would like, I'm going to be contacting the developer this week to see if, what their response would be as a joint project. So that's about all I have to say for now. So thank you very much. Hope you consider that. I would love to meet with you all individually, or in a study session, as a group. And if anybody wants to see this, this is our manual that shows what was, what we had proposed in nineteen ninety-nine. And it's quite illuminating. So this is available.
Thank you. Monica Olson, Suzanne Moore, Tree Steyer.
With the council's permission, Monica and I are exchanging places. Good evening. I'm Suzanne Moore. In the past two weeks, Pacifica experienced divisiveness between advocates for tenants' rights and paid-signature gathers hired by the California Apartment Association. While on a sidewalk at Lindemar Safeway, I was called names and bumped by a petitioner, so I couldn't take, talk to a fellow resident. Mayor O'Neill says that our divisiveness is due to fear, and I agree. Let's take a moment to recall how we came to this. Pacifica is in a housing crisis. Median rents increased over fifty percent in five years, twice the national average. Low-income rental availability is less than zero-point-five percent, a critical reduction. No-cause evictions increased, with sixty-two families alone evicted from Pacifica Skies Estates in two thousand and twelve. Our community is experiencing displacement. Our neighbors are leaving Pacifica, priced out from the community where many were born and raised. The housing crisis has caused problems in transportation, with sixty percent of workers in San Mateo County commuting from another county. In education, where our mayor reminds us that Terra Nova experienced a thirty percent teacher turnover in two thousand and sixteen. And in public health, where our county's chief public health officer stated the negative impact is serious and widespread. This is the environment which created fair rents for Pacifica. Over a hundred Pacifica residents gathered at Saint Peters in two thousand and fifteen, alarmed at the high rent increases and evictions. A question becoming clear with time is this: Can our community preserve its diversity instead of being transformed by the economics of supply and demand? The ordinance on the November ballot is a result of that investigation. Drafted by Fair Rents and modified and finalized by our Pacifica City Attorney and City Council, the ordinance protects apartment owners, guarantees a return on investments, allows evictions for just cause, allows to petition for rents above baseline with justification, and allows vacant units to be offered at market rate. It protects tenants, establishes planned rent increases which allow for budgeting, and protects against no-cause eviction.
Monica?
I'm Monica Olson for, in Fair Rents for Pacifica in Faith in Action Bay Area. In following up with Susan's comments, I'd like to mention that the rent stabilization ordinance is a win-win for our community. Its protection, limited by state law to multi-unit rental properties built before ninety-five, impacts twenty-two-hundred rental units. And it will be budget-neutral for Pacifica. This is our, there is fear in our community. Increased after San Mateo County Realtor letter erroneously advertised a specter of rising crime related to rent stabilization. It increased, fear increased, when our community witnessed name-calling and threats during a recent petition drive. It increased with sudden high rent increases made possible by window of opportunity created by our city attorney and by failure of our city council to pass an urgent moratorium, protecting tenants until the election. And the increasing fear that has been since the beginning of families endangered by speculators buying up our apartment buildings here. To apartment owners, yes, the ordinance will impact how you conduct business, but the ordinance protects a return on your investment and allows you to evict with just cause. To our tenants, your fears are justified, as demonstrated by past rent increases and evictions, and most recently, by rent increases of five hundred to seven hundred dollars per month experienced by some residents. You deserve protection. To all Pacifica, we are witnessing an historical transformation in our community. The question remains unchanged. Can we preserve economic diversity in our community? Or do we leave our fate to supply and demand? Please study this issue, participate, and vote. Thank you.
Tree Steyer, and then Anita Reese. And Anita's is my last card for oral communications.
Good evening. I just want to ask you about your lack of transparency. And you represent us. We're the people. We should be making some of these decisions, not you, not self-interest. Now, for instance, I, I put in for a lot of requests under public records, and the majority of the time, I get them within ten days. And a lot of times, they're not very clear. So then I go to the city council, and I want a little bit more information. For instance, you need to be more transparent to the public. The certificates of participation are really remortgaging our city properties, which is the city hall, the city, the community center, the police department, the Vermont West Park, and the Public Works Building. I don't know, maybe there's more. And tonight, I seen on the agenda, a lot of consultants for affordable housing, or whatever. It, it doesn't have a dollar sign. How much are these consultants charging us? There should be dollar signs behind everything. And then, I asked today, went to city council, or chambers there, and I said, "When are we gonna have the meeting, the next meeting, for the certificates of participation?" And I found out that the board of directors are you, the city council. Well, I was told, "Whenever you feel like it, Mike, to have a meeting." That's not being transparent to the public. The other thing is, there was supposed to be a meeting tonight after the regular city council. But I don't see it here. I don't see anything that says certificates of participation or remortgaging. What I, what I was told by your clerk here, number eight, is a resolution authorizing issuance of state-of-waste-water revenue bonds. These are more bonds that we're gonna buy now, or sell, sell off some more of our property? I mean, can you be more explicit? Are you gonna have a meeting after the council meeting, or am I gonna waste my time? Can you answer that?
You know, we're not allowed to make comments during oral communications.
Well, I just, I didn't get an answer. I mean, name it, what it is.
Anita?
Anita, with the Pacifica Resource Center. I, I just wanted to give you a couple of updates and extend an additional... I just wanted to give you a couple of updates and extend an additional invitation to our volunteer appreciation lunch on Wednesday. But before I go there, I'm going to let you know that the one-day homeless count executive summary has come out. Overall, the number of homeless folks in the county has decreased by 16%. It went down to 1,253 on the night slash morning of January 25, 2017. Overall, the number of folks on the street went down by 62%, and in encampments, went down by 30%. RVs went up by 44%, and cars went up by 25%. In Pacifica specifically, our numbers increased by 78% from 63 two years ago to 112 in, in 2017. And I think that that's primarily because we have eight census tracts, and of those eight census tracts, eight teams went out, and of them, we had six homeless guides with, with them. So I think that when we have homeless guides, we have a much better count, because folks know where they're staying, whereas in other cities, they didn't have as many homeless guides. So I think, as a result, we have a more accurate count than some of our partner, or fellow cities. So this information will be used by the county, along with other information, to determine how they will invest in, in resources around homelessness. And their ultimate goal is to end homelessness in 2020. So we've got three years. We'll see what we can do, at least in Pacifica, we'll focus here. So I just wanted to provide that information to you all. The final report will come out in July, and in that report, we'll see more of a breakdown of what those 112 folks are in Pacifica. Are they primarily in RVs and cars, or are they encampments? And my sense is that they were mostly in RVs and cars. So the other piece that I wanted to mention is our volunteer appreciation lunch is on Wednesday. Every year, we have over 300 volunteers give more than 8,000 hours to help us support our residents of Pacifica who are struggling to make ends meet. And we truly couldn't do it without the volunteers that provide support to us. You all heard, obviously, about Pacificans' cares and support. We will also be honoring Julie Staropen, Joel Fontaine, and Marion Hinshaw, Marion Hinshaw. So if you have been or are currently a volunteer, we invite you all to come. It is at the American Legion Hall at 12:30. We'll be having paella, virgin sangria, and cake. So please join us. Thank you.
Okay, I have no more cards for oral communications. Next is council communications. The purpose of council communications is for council members to inform each other of items of potential interest to other council members, such as inter-agency meetings. So is there any lights? John?
Last week, I attended the San Mateo County Pre-Hospital Emergency Medical Services Group, JPA, which is quite a mouthful. The meeting was over with in about 15 minutes, but we had a record number of folks there. It was, we were urged to come because they were passing a budget, and they needed a quorum, and been through all this before. But I just wanted to take a minute and explain to you what, what this is, Pacifica's a member of it, and how it's funded. And so what it is, basically, is the radio system that fire, fire emergency uses to take calls and respond. And, you know, pick somebody up and take them to the hospital. And it's funded in a somewhat circuitous way. It's primarily funded, well, exclusively funded by a fee that's charged each trip that it takes somebody to the hospital, and that's paid to the county. And then the county pays it to the pre-hospital emergency medical services group. And they spend it as appropriate. They spend it all on, you know, a little on, on salaries, you know, like $200,000 a year in salaries, but about $4 million on radio, radio equipment that is distributed around the county. And it's designed to be fail-safe. I mean, you know, to work under the worst possible conditions, and to be redundant, and so on. And so I just thought I'd share yet another branch of government that probably few of you knew existed. Thank you.
Sue Varraloff?
I attended lots of meetings this week and last week. I went to the employee recognition lunch, and I would like to congratulate all employees, but especially the ones who received awards for their service to the city in years. I went to the hip housing lunch to hear what they're doing to encourage affordable housing and alternatives to affordable housing. I went to the City and County Association of Governments meeting, and I was appointed to their legislative committee, so I added another committee. We had a budget study session last week. We have another one coming up on Thursday. I also attended the first City and County Association of Governments Water Committee, and basically, we had presentations on all the water issues affecting our county, sea level rise, stormwater, and several other water issues. I attended the ribbon cutting at the Boys and Girls Club to see a beautiful new mural with ocean and whales. If you have a chance to go by there, look at their big mural that they have outside. The kids were really excited. I attended coffee with a cop on Friday. I talked to several police officers. There were a lot of people in attendance, which was nice to see, and I went fairly early on. I did ask police officers if they'd had any issues with the new 7-Eleven, and I asked three people that, and no one had had any issues with the 7-Eleven, and I was quite happy to hear that. Also, tomorrow night, at Ingrid B. Lacy, there's a library open house that is from 4:00 to 7:00, and then an orientation session from 7:00 to 8:30. This is to get more involved in our library. So those are at Ingrid B. Lacy tomorrow night. Thank you.
Deirdre?
I just, I had sent an email to Director Ocampo and Director Wermeyer. The Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee has a call for projects out, so there's funding for 2017 to 2018. One of my recommendations is to add a bike lane to Lindemar Boulevard to comply with California Complete Street Acts, and just kind of look a little bit further into that. And so, open to hearing suggestions on that, too. Just wanted to put that out there. Thanks.
Sue DeGruy?
Excuse me, yes. I also attend quite a few meetings. The one for the employee reorganization, which was great, I'm glad they, we do those sort of things. Hip Housing, what I learned, knew about hip housing is, they've been around for a long time, and they try to match up people who are interested in taking others in, and they do it, they've been there for a long time, so I've watched it, because I didn't think it would actually work, but actually, it does work. And it's protective to both the person that is willing to take a renter in, and to the renters that do come in. So in case you're mismatched, there's an easy process for separating. The, the new thing is, at least struck me as new, is they now are able to buy apartment buildings, or, and they had a guest speaker of one, was it Redwood City, I think it was, where a landlord was willing to work with the hip housing to sell it for affordable housing, which I, I think this is a new phenomenon, and I'm very happy to, to see this, and hope that our city works with them as much as possible. Did attend the Economic Development Committee, which is on the second Tuesday at 6 o'clock at the Pacifica, no, excuse me, Police Department building. That's a great one, moving along well, and we have subcommittees, so if you're interested in that sort of thing, I think it's very valuable. And the Open Space, OSPAC, and Parkland, we're working diligently on numerous things, the most impacted right at the moment, because the commemoration of the Portola discovery of our bay is coming up in 2019, and we're also commemorating the history of the Native Americans. So there's a lot, a lot, a lot going on for that. Also attended the coffee with the, with the police, coffee with cops at Fairmont, and the request was, again, reminded us that they would like some striping in that area going on to Monterey, and also at the top, I know that would be part of Highway 35, which I think is Caltrans, but anyway, but the fog is coming back, and it's very, very difficult to see in those areas, so they've requested for safety issues, if we could put that on our agenda to look at, is a striping so that they can see the edges of the road on making those left and right turns. I think that's, we need to bring that back up. Wanted to mention that, oh yes, today I did was, today was Commute.org. We went over the budget for Commute.org. They no longer have a shuttle manager, which was a little bit disconcerting, but actually, they are hiring a consultant to, or consult, outsourced, to come in and check over those things, and feel that that will go rather smoothly. It also saves us some money. And the, we did, you see on our website is the letter from the congresspersons regarding the FAA and our deer airport noise. And we have had a meeting with small groups, with the San Francisco Airport Roundtable, and I have volunteered to be on the legislative one, which I've been pushing since July, and on the work. So the legislative subcommittee, we are putting together and moving forward. One of the things, I don't think I mentioned this before, is that we're hoping, or planning so far, to reach out to all grassroots areas across the nation, to get the public to realize that as a voice together across the nation, that we actually might be able to move things a little bit quicker. So for city council coming up, the SFO Roundtable meets in June, and some of these things will be solidified by that time. I would like to see, probably in the second meeting in June, or possibly July 1st, if that's, if we can just entertain what kind of a letter, or what kind of an action would our city and council like to do to foster things moving. Things are moving, but from my point of view, and from, I would say, the community's point of view, both in our city and elsewhere, things are moving much too slowly. We've been very polite, we've worked things out, but it just seems like it's another month, another month, another month, another year, another year, and meanwhile, they add more flight paths over our areas. So it's beginning to be borderline disingenuous, shall we say, although I think that our congresspersons are sincere. I just think you only have a limited number of congresspersons, so it's very vital to get more congresspersons across the nation, so that when it comes up in Congress, they'll have a majority. Now, to slip something in there that is, is also, well, you tell me how you think about this, privatization. So the talk about privatizing the FAA is coming up. My gut feeling is that's not going to help us, but then maybe I'm wrong. So, so that's one of the, the big things. The other big thing that I would like to take the opportunity to do, and if I'm out of city attorney and city manager, I need your attention to make sure I'm doing this at the right time. So I would like to put on council's agenda, a no zoning request for Palmetto, the streetscape that we're moving forward on, to ensure a kind of, the kind of new businesses coming in, that they are complementary land uses, to enhance our streetscape for Palmetto, to provide us with more intrinsic and on-the-ball, shall we say, oversight. So I'm requesting that we discuss a specific plan overlay for the Palmetto area, and that we consider giving specific direction to staff about that. So I'm asking council to take a little leadership on that. I, I think that would be very helpful if we, as a community, were more in control of reaching out who, what kind of businesses should come into Palmetto, how to support the local businesses, and, and not to have conflicts. So if you would be willing to agendize that, I would appreciate it. Do we all need to nod yes, or how does this go? Okay, thank you.
Done?
I think I'm done.
Yeah, I would be supportive of that, because I think, I know Millbury outlawed the number of Chinese restaurants on their Main Street. Yeah, because, yeah, we don't want a bunch of non-revenue-producing stores. I also was at the employee recognition event, and I do want to thank all those employees that were recognized, as well as the employees that were not recognized. Our city clerk was recognized. We all knew she was Kathy. And it was good, and it was fun, they had some nice, you know, pictures and stories, people tell, council's not there, so that was cool. They attended the CCAG Board down at San Carlos, meeting wasn't really eventful. Library Foundation, we did have a budget study session regarding public safety. Attended LAFCO, attended a meeting with FogFest. There's going to be having some, there's some issues with FogFest that they want worked out, so I'm going to be putting a meeting together with the fire department and the FogFest committee. Also attended the ribbon cutting boys, at the Boys and Girls Club for the new mural, and it was really, it was real nice, and it was done by a gentleman that lives up in Manor. He's actually an engineer, and he does this as kind of like a volunteer thing, so that was really kind of nice to see. Attended councils of cities at, down East Palo Alto, and if you ever get a chance to go to Cooley's Landing, I, the city manager, attended with me. It's really a nice, it's right on the bay, you get a great view of the Dumbarton Bridge and stuff, and I'd never been there before, and I was born and raised in San Francisco, so that was really kind of nice. Attended the Sports Hall of Fame, got to see all the recipients that got their rewards, awards, I guess, before they go off to college, and it's just nice to see the, you know, the good kids get the recognition, and the acclaim, and the applause, because everybody talks about, you know, how bad some, even, was it Aristotle, or something, had that quote about, you know, their long hair, they're loud, they're boisterous and stuff, but it's nice to see the good kids get recognized also. Also attended the library JPA this morning. There's some new things, that they're developing a master plan for Maker Square, which will be real interesting, and once they get in the library, they're there, people just use them all the time. I also would like to put on an agenda for looking at a parking permit, system of some sort for the senior housing at Cressby. When I was there a couple weeks ago, there's like 30 parking spaces in the, in the complex, and there's 100 units, and most of them have cars, but the surfers are taking up all the spaces on Cressby, Roberts Road, et cetera. And so I'd like to maybe talk and see about having, if there's council interest in having, establishing that, because that would be kind of a precedent. And then also, Roberts Road is becoming a real nuisance, with kids hanging out there, garbage, smoking, whatever, drinking, whatever. And I think it would be nice if we could see the police kind of enforce that a little bit more. Okay?
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
My computer's acting up. Can I grab, can, can chief bring me an agenda from the back?
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay. Sue DeGruy?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, you just hit. Okay, so nobody else, anything else? Okay. Moving on to the next items for public hearings. During public hearings, an applicant or their agent and appellant have 10 minutes for their opening presentation, and three minutes for rebuttal before the public hearing is closed. Members of the public are limited to three minutes. And this is item number six. It's appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of a request to expand, extend the expiration dates of a site development permit on Beach Boulevard.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I am Associate Planner Christian Murdock from the Planning Department. The appeal before you relates to the extension of expiration dates for three permits: a site development permit for construction of a nine-unit building with underground parking garage, a use permit for a clustered housing development, and a tentative subdivision map for a condominium subdivision. The city council approved these permits on May 14, 2007, on appeal from the Planning Commission. The city council also approved a coastal development permit for the project at that time, but that permit was appealed to the Coastal Commission and approved by that board. time, but that permit was appealed to the Coastal Commission and approved by that body in March two thousand and eight. The Coastal Commission has processed subsequent extensions of that permit. The Planning Commission, following staff's recommendation, denied the appellant's extension request at a public hearing on March twentieth, two thousand and seventeen. The March twentieth public hearing was a continuation of an earlier public hearing on December nineteenth, two thousand and seven, two thousand and sixteen, rather. Staff's recommendation to deny the extension was based on several factors that reflect the changes in circumstances that have become evident in the decade since the city originally approved the project. I'll briefly summarize these issues, which are discussed, discussed more fully in the staff report. First, some key regulations have been adopted or substantially revised since the original project approval. These include the city's inclusionary housing ordinance, which for this project would require one housing unit be set aside and made affordable to persons with low or moderate incomes. The city's municipal regional permit for stormwater treatment, which requires infiltration or treatment of stormwater on the site. The project's current design provides for all stormwater runoff to discharge directly into the ocean without filtration or treatment. In the two thousand and sixteen California Building Code, particularly its enhanced, enhanced energy efficiency regulations, the project has been designed to comply with the outdated two thousand and ten California Building Code requirements, although two successor additions of the Building Code have been adopted. The second issue involves changes in the conditions of the Beach Boulevard seawall fronting the site, which experienced a failure at Santa Maria Avenue in January two thousand and sixteen, and a sizable void at Paloma Avenue in February two thousand and sixteen. These pictures, which I've printed out before you, will demonstrate the general conditions in the area during severe weather. Could I have the projector turn on, please?
It's on.
So to orient you, this is an aerial image of the northern portion of the Sharp Park neighborhood. Uh, the top left with the red box, that's the project site, fifteen sixty-seven Beach Boulevard. It's at the northern end of Beach Boulevard. Large wave impacts, which you'll see in the, the following picture, occurred just at that corner of Paloma Avenue and Beach Boulevard. And these pictures from January two thousand and sixteen show significant wave overtopping over the existing coastal protection. And the result of the wave overtopping is flooding at the corner of Paloma Avenue and Beach Boulevard. This next sequence demonstrates the void that developed at the intersection of Paloma Avenue and Beach Boulevard. You can see here, the soil underpinning this top portion of pavement was undermined and escaped from behind the seawall, causing the collapse of the, the cobblestone topping. You can see here the stainless steel tiebacks that hold the seawall and the earth together to mechanically stabilize it. It's difficult to see, perhaps it'll be clear in the printouts, but these, some of them have corroded and actually severed. Others are severely corroded and degraded. And this is a picture from within the void. You can see the tiebacks at the top and the small opening at the end. Staff believes that that's the small opening where much of this material, once, once moistened, escaped through a void in the seawall. And then lastly, many of you are already familiar with the seawall failure at Santa Maria Avenue. Here, viewed from Santa Maria Avenue with the left and right orientation being Beach Boulevard, the significant void going back, I believe nearly ten feet from the top, this was earlier in the failure, and then later you can see that concrete beam across the top eventually collapsed. And so these pictures demonstrate the conditions of the northern section north of the Pacific appear for the seawall. The third issue with the extension relates to concerns about the adequacy of the California Environmental Act, or SEQA review of the project in light of changes in circumstances since initial approval of the project. In particular, the adequacy of the geology and soils and hydrology and water quality sections of the adopted mitigated negative declaration for the project. The concerns I've noted have significant bearing on whether the city should grant another extension of this project approved in two thousand and seven. Most directly, they require the city to consider its ability to make the required findings for approval of the project. For instance, the findings for approval of a use permit require the city to find that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the use or building applied for will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood, or to the general welfare of the city. The information known today about the condition of the Beach Boulevard seawall, as well as the common understanding of the detrimental effects of untreated stormwater discharges, call into question the city's ability to make such a finding. They also require the city to consider whether it properly evaluated all potentially significant environmental impacts from the project. With the example of untreated stormwater discharges, there is the potential for negative effects on water quality from the direct discharges into the Pacific Ocean. The appellant has claimed that many of the issues raised by staff can be addressed and an extension of the permits should be granted. However, based on the number and complexity of the issues identified by staff, it is our opinion that a substantial change in circumstances since initial project approval has occurred, and a comprehensive ground-up review of this or any development project at the site is warranted prior to granting approval. I appreciate your time, and we are joined this evening by Planning Commissioner Tom Clifford, in case there are any questions about the Planning Commission's early review. Thank you.
Comments from council? Questions first?
I have some questions and comments, but I think I'll wait for the
Liberation?
For the applicant to, to speak.
Who? That us?
One of the items was about the inclusionary zoning, and the dates are very close when they submitted, but it was, went into effect on May ninth. Maybe I have this wrong. And there went to conditional approval on May fourteenth. So was it close because they'd already submitted their, their items?
Yes. Yes, that's exactly why.
Okay, thank you.
Applicant, the first
Open the public hearing.
Oh, they go first, the public hearing?
Oh, you open the public hearing.
Okay, I open the public hearing, and is it the applicant first then, or, yeah? Okay, open the public hearing, and applicant that is appealing the Planning Commission's decision?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Excuse my voice, I am a little under the weather tonight. The administrative record in this matter is pretty substantial.
Could you state your name, please?
Pardon me?
Could you state your name, please?
Mark Haisloop with CHS Development Group. I'm not going to recite all the issues, but the technical issues are what have shocked us, both from a position of process and fact. The applicant went through in the summer of two thousand and fifteen into two thousand and sixteen, an elongated process of revising the engineering, the drainage, and several other issues of the project with the city. It also resulted in a negotiation, an extensive negotiation, for the grant of an easement across this property in favor of the City of Pacifica, as well as the entering into of a development agreement, which obligates this developer to make certain improvements on the site at a cost of several hundred thousand dollars. Those agreements were entered into and executed by the city attorney, the, the city manager, and my client, and they were recorded on September twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, which is just four weeks before the application for the extension. At no time in that four or five-month period of active negotiations, modifications to the program, et cetera, did anyone ever say, hey, we got a problem with another extension. Nothing like that took, took place. We submitted our application, and we waited for the hearing to come up, and as is Pacifica's rather unique process, no information is, is leaked. I think, I think Trump would like to have as, as good a control over the information as Pacifica does, until the Friday afternoon before the Monday hearing, at which time was the first inclination, inclination, or inkling that we had that there was any problem with the extension, or that it was going to be recommended to be denied. What we did at that time is we looked at the staff report, which raised the issues that Mr. Murdock raised, and we asked for a continuance so that we could get our technical people involved, which we did. And we have a coastal engineer, Dave Skelly, who I believe you all are familiar with. He prepared a report in response to the staff report, which says our site inspection revealed that the shore protection is reasonable, is in reasonable good condition and not in need of maintenance at this time. This is, this is in December of two thousand and sixteen. We have reviewed again the above- referenced structural analysis by YU structural engineers, and their conclusions remain valid and pertinent. His conclusion of the seawall and the impact of this project on the seawall is, based upon our discussion above, we certify, we certify that the proposed project, including the driveway, the building loads, and the increased traffic, will not impact the existing shore protection. We further certify that the existing seawall is in good condition, and if maintained, will protect Beach Boulevard and the city infrastructure behind it. What did we get in response to that, which we submitted to the Planning Commission? We got no specifics whatsoever. We have some general stuff about what happened on the seawall way down the street, and granted, there are problems with Pacifica's seawall, but no one, no one has said that this project and the seawall at the very, very north end of this project is either in distress, in need of anything, or that this project will detrimentally affect it. The only document that we received after the, um, submitted by our engineers was a document from the city's plan check consultant, which went on about drainage. And Mr. Murdock's absolutely correct. There are some changes that came into effect after the first of the year, after our application for a, um, extension was, was filed. But as the staff report readily admits, those changes and the stormwater treatment can be addressed in construction. And we certainly have every intention of doing that. Now, I think on, on those issues, the question is, is do we deserve a extension? This is the sixth extension that has been granted on this project. It is the third by my clients. There was a string of economically driven issues prior to that that my clients had nothing to do with. One of the things that I think exacerbates the problem that this council faces tonight with this application, excuse me, is, is what I referenced earlier, which is this easement and this development contract. They're recorded documents. They are, in fact, burdens and clouds on my client's title. If you deny this extension, my client has no project. My client is sitting there with a piece of property, no project, encumbered by easements in the, in favor of the City of Pacifica, giving the city rights to cross their property for maintenance purposes, and on the face of it obligates my client to do certain improvements. That's simply unfair. How do we unwind that? Are you going to vote tonight to vacate the easements? I don't think so. And, and, and so I think on the equitable position, you have saddled my client with these easements in September of two thousand and sixteen, without ever giving them an inclination that there was any problem with their extension of time. The other question, I think, from an equitable point of view, is if you look at this, if we, if you deny this, and tomorrow morning my client is so inclined that he takes his entire project and comes back into Tina's office and writes another big check for SEQA review and we go forward, what's that project going to look like? And there isn't anything in this record that would indicate that the engineering is wrong. There isn't anything that would indicate that the SEQA analysis would come to a different conclusion. And the project may just simply spend a lot of more, a lot more money to get back to the same position it is now. Now, whether they'll come back with the same project or not, I don't know. But that, that, that's another issue for another day. What I would like to close with, for your submission, is you have the discretion tonight to deny this application and divest my client of the project that he has sunk a large portion of his personal fortune into. But as the, as the nuns taught me in grade school, just because you can doesn't mean you should. And I think the equities here are clear. Now, what bothers me more than anything else is some of what I'm hearing, and that is, well, you know, we've got a problem with the seawall. We got to look at that. At the Planning Commission, there was discussion about, we're going to wait for the Corps of Engineers to come up with a conclusion. Well, if that's the case, you guys are basically putting a moratorium on development on this property. And if it's just this property, it's spot zoning, and I, I think there's a world of problems with that, and I also think that's, that's unfair. If because this problem is of such a immense public problem in the City of Pacifica, I think you need to debate, have public hearings about a moratorium, not just turn around and say that this project might have something different if we went through the process again today. Thank you.
Okay, next is the, is there any other applicants? Okay. The next is the, for some reason, I'm having a really hard time.
I think I'm the only speaker, or the first speaker tonight to finish before his time.
Okay, good, good, thank you. I'll open up the public comment. I have two cards, a Stephen Clark and a Craig Joyner. And you have three minutes.
Honorable Mayor and city council, I'm Stephen Clark. I live at seven Paloma Avenue, so my property abuts the subject property on the south side. And, you know, I heard somebody mention speakeasies. Did you know that that property was originally a speakeasy back in the twenties? It was called the Skullcracker. Anyway, I learned that from my, my neighbor Patrick Wrench, who lives at fifteen eighty-one adjacent also. He passed away unfortunately a few months ago, but he briefed me on the history of the property and efforts to develop it. And I would like to thank the planning staff, the commission, for their very thoughtful review of the project and their report. And I share their concerns, and I, I think they're significant and serious. By the way, I love Pacifica. I consider it a privilege living here. I've been here three years. One of the great things is I hear the waves crashing, and boy, do they ever crash. They're loud, and I've seen big ones, the ones that you cited in your photographs, as well as the decks on that building at fifteen eighty-one, and one Paloma were just demolished and thrown around like little matchsticks. The latter was just this past January. I have photos. And also, I share the concerns about the seawall. And by the way, this is not a seawall, it's a retaining wall. It's a vertical wall that's perpendicular to the surface. There's concerns about that. It's not a proper seawall with a curve. And then, I'm also concerned about this excavation for the building foundation and for the underground parking. I mean, you know, waves are going to flood that underground parking garage, and there've been other, there've been a lot of studies. In fact, Patrick Wrench, in two thousand and seven, appealed the original construction permit, and he cited a geological report that basically said that surrounding properties could be impacted by an excavation of this nature. So I would just like to say, I appreciate the hard work that's been done and the hard work that you all do, and I would hope that the Planning Commission's recommendations would be followed. I realize this property is going to be developed, but I would hope that it would be developed in line with other adjacent buildings and according to the character of the neighborhood. And I want to thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Next is Craig Joyner. And Craig is the last card. If there's anybody else, please submit a yellow card. Thanks.
Good evening, councilman. My name is Craig Joyner. I live at two forty-four Shoreview, which is the property directly north of the subject property. I, when I first moved there a year and a half ago, someone told me that that property was being developed, and there was an underground parking garage, and I thought they were telling me a joke. Who in the heck would put an underground parking garage that close to the ocean? Turns out, it wasn't a joke. Turns out, it wasn't a joke. I have several concerns about the property. Not the least of which is digging an underground parking garage, the fact that it would destabilize the sand in that area. My house is on pilings on sand, that entire area is sand. I, I'm very concerned about my own property in the event that they start excavating deeply over on that side. I've seen in the last two winters, the waves that come up on that property. I watch it very closely, worrying about my own property. I can tell you that there's always one night, one day, when there are huge waves that attack that, that entire street. You've seen pictures of it. Maybe not there, but maybe next year. You don't know where it's going, going to be in the coming years, but you know that it's a perennial thing that happens in Pacifica. I don't want to see our city in the national news again. I don't want to see our city opening itself up to liability by approving something that started 10 years ago under building laws 10 years ago. And with 10 years, a decade of information, new information about sea level rise, about building codes, structural codes, in my estimation, there needs to be something there. People like to use that as a place to park, to watch the sunset. They like to use it as a place to park and drink beer, and who, who knows what else? The, the entire project needs to be revisioned and start over, basically, with current situation in mind. I think a nine-unit condo complex totally doesn't fit into the tenor of the neighborhood. It needs to be scaled and redesigned in a way that is proper for that area. I thank you for your time.
Okay, I have no other yellow cards, so seeing no one, I close the public hearing. I, I don't know who.
The applicant in the panel has time for rebuttal.
Oh, that's right. Did the applicant or his agent? Can you, can you explain your relationship with the applicant? You're the, his counsel, or?
Well, I am a lawyer, but CHS Development Group, we are a real estate development, construction company. And my role in the company is land use permitting, that sort of thing. And that's what the applicant has asked me to do, the kind of stuff I've done for way too long. Okay, in rebuttal, first of all, I got to compliment everybody here, especially the last two speakers, at one being eloquent, eloquent, and two being fairly reasonably oriented. The problem that I, I feel is that the issues that those two gentlemen raise are not going to be impacted, corrected, or made worse by the development of this project. We can't solve the problems of the entire seawall in Pacifica. The, what we have studied is the particular seawall, and what makes it so strong is the way it terminates at the, at the end up there. And I think that there's a lot of people that have concerns about issues in Pacifica, but we can't fix them. Our project isn't intended to fix them, and it's not fair for you to ask us to be responsible for them. No, thank you.
Okay, so now I close the public hearing. John?
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Haysloop. I'm sorry.
I can use the extra.
Great. First of all, can you describe the easement across the property? What, what its purpose is?
My, my understanding is it's an easement that allows the city to cross the property for maintenance purposes to, it's been a while since I read it. I think to, to, to access the beach or something like that. Is that, no, what's it for? The way I read it, 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 it's an easement in favor of the city of Pacifica.
Maybe, maybe I'll ask the planning staff.
So there was, there is a storm drain line, a public storm drain line that's on the, I believe it's the north end of the lot. And that has been there for a very long time. So the city already had a prescriptive easement to access that line and maintain it when necessary. And so the formalized easement simply formalized the prescriptive easement that was already there for, for the storm drain line.
And is that, that's like a, a big storm drain just before the outfall into the ocean, is that right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and the easement is on the north side of the property. Is it under the paper street or near the paper street?
I think it's near the paper street, but it wouldn't be in the paper street. It would, because otherwise it wouldn't be, the easement wouldn't be necessary.
Well, I'm not sure whether the paper street even exists as a street anymore. I think that's questionable, but anyway, yeah, okay.
I, I stand corrected on, on, on its use, but it is for the city purpose. And the one thing I would add, and the city attorney can jump in on this, I was unaware that public entities could acquire property by prescriptive rights.
Yes, they can.
They can?
Yes.
I can't get prescriptive rights against you, though.
Oh, you can't.
Yeah. The, the, the issue with the easement is that if we come back with a different project, it's going to constrain the potential layout of the project. And that, I don't know how to solve.
Doesn't, doesn't it constrain the current project?
Yeah, but we, we designed it, we designed it so that the easement would be in favor of the city, and it would stay there.
I don't understand.
So there wouldn't be a difference in any constraint because the, the line is there. It's, 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 you, you, the constraint of having a utility running through your property is you typically can't put a building on top of it. And you could put landscaping setbacks on top of it, parking potentially. But this is already there, so it's not, would not create a new constraint.
If I could, if I could please add, if you turn to packet page 120, it's, in fact, the unique configuration of this, an unusual configuration of this project with its underground access that necessitated this very careful approach. The city, in fact, allowing this to be built over the storm drain in an unusual way. So the city needed to ensure its rights to access and maintain it in the event of an emergency. So it's, in fact, to benefit the project.
What page are you on?
Packet page 120. You'll see at the top of the drawing, the semicircle orientation of the driveway accessing the underground parking garage. And as Director Waremeister indicated, it's not typical to allow construction over such a public infrastructure. And so it was, in fact, a concession, in my opinion, that the city made in approving the project to allow that configuration.
Well, I think it was a joint consideration because the easement is over property that the pipe is not in, so that the pipe can be maintained.
Okay. All right, next, next question. You mentioned certain improvements. What are those improvements?
They're in the development agreement. I believe there's, I can, I can pull it up, hang on.
If I could just jump in, I, I believe that Mr. Haysloop is talking about a subdivision improvement agreement, not a development agreement. Is that correct?
Subdivision improvement agreement. Estimated cost $471,000. And the description of the work is... Well, it's a set of plans dated 4/27/16. Not, and I, I would also point out that these plans are in April of 16, so these improvements are not 2006. I think there's an impression that this project has not undergone any changes, modifications, or updating of the project, the codes, or anything else since 2006. And that's simply not true. I don't have the 4/27/16 plans by Vector Vision Land Surveyors.
Do you have any idea what the improvements are that would cost $471,000?
I'm going to speculate here, which is always a bad thing. I assume they're the normal stuff like curbs, gutters, sidewalks in a, in a certain locale. There's probably some storm drainage. There may even be signage.
Does planning staff have anything in more detail?
The subdivision improvement agreement's not typically a plan that the planning department is involved in. It's typically handled in the engineering division of the Public Works Department. We do have Associate Engineer Lee Panza here, who I believe is familiar with the SIA in question. He may be able to further summarize what improvements were required.
Okay, and while we get him, I have a couple more questions for the, for the applicant. So when you, when you quote one of your consultants on the seawall and you certify that it will not fail, is that right?
No, he didn't say that. I don't think anybody can do that. Based upon our discussion above, we certify that the proposed project, including the driveway, the building loads, and the increased traffic, will not impact the existing shore protection.
Not impact.
We further certify that the existing seawall is in good condition, and if maintained, will protect Beach Boulevard and the city infrastructure behind it. And engineers are, certifying in engineering parlance is a, is a term of art, which is defined in the, in the California Business and Professions Code, Section 6735.5. It is not an insurance policy.
So in other words, if it, if the, if the project did impact the seawall or in some way, the city would have no recourse to, to, to you all to, for repairs?
I, I, I don't think that that's accurate. If we did something that caused damage to city property and we were negligent in doing so, the city would have every right to seek recompense. But this is an engineering project, and, you know, you, you know as well as I do that every engineering project in the city of Pacifica, no engineer is going to give you a guarantee on, on it. They are not in the insurance business.
Okay. Are we, are we ready now for the subdivision improvements?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, I have a copy of the subdivision improvement agreement with me. I won't go into any of the details. I just want to give you a brief overview of
Perfect.
the improvements that were being required of the applicant. Along the east side, the inland side of Beach Boulevard, all the way from the front of the project to Paloma, he was to construct a new sidewalk and curb and gutter. And at Paloma, he was to construct new pedestrian ramps in both directions across Beach Boulevard and across Paloma, with some improvements to, to the curb and gutter around that intersection. And pavement overlay, in other words, a reconstruction of the existing pavement of Beach Boulevard. He was to create a turnaround for fire engines at the cul-de-sac. And beyond that, got into the private improvements I won't go into.
Okay, thank you very much. And my final question for you all is, why not, why not just, well, why would restarting the process hurt your client?
It'll delay the process, project by another two years and probably cost him half a million dollars.
Okay. It has been 10 years, and, you know, you mentioned a moratorium on development. 10 years is a pretty substantial moratorium as well, so.
But I, I've, I've said this to the planning commission. I've been doing this a long time, and I have never, ever seen a project with six extensions. I've seen them with three, and I think one with four. I've never seen six. The, the, the current owner has had three. The, prior to that, I believe.
There was a foreclosure, wasn't there?
Yeah, there was a foreclosure on the property, and then the intervening recession in the '08, '09, 2010.
Yeah.
So those are the reasons for the delay. Whether that's an excuse for the delay is up to you.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you very much. So for the planning staff, on the, can't even read my own notes. Regarding, ah, yes, the stormwater. You mentioned that the stormwater will be piped directly to the ocean untreated? Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and where, where will that outlet approximately? Just somewhere?
So our engineer has indicated it will discharge through an opening in the head wall of the main six-foot stormwater pipe at the north end of the site.
Okay. And with respect to the overtopping of the seawall and the photos that you showed at Paloma, am I correct? I've walked up there quite a bit, but my memory, I wasn't really paying as close attention as, as would need be to determine whether this site is lower than the intersection of Beach and Paloma.
I, I don't think we have those figures available right now.
Okay, I, I think that is possible. It's certainly not any higher. And otherwise, I just have a couple of comments. I think the, the comments about SEQA are well-taken. That the untreated stormwater and the possible effects on the seawall are, or, you know, if, if they occurred, would be detrimental to the neighborhood and to Pacifica in general. And, and finally, I noticed on the, the first page of drawings, page 115, packet page 115, under the project notes, number six, "The following information will be provided to all condominium owners and potential buyers. Flooding of the garage and storage level may occur several times a year. All personal items that might be damaged by water should be stored at least two and a half feet above the floor on that level. Notice will be given when the wave run-up is anticipated, so that whatever measures deemed advisable can be taken. And the top of the entry drive will be blocked with sandbags." And the top of the entry drive will be blocked with sandbags at the, at a time of significant wave run-up." It seems to me that that is sort of an indictment, if you will, of having underground parking at this location. So that's all I have.
Sue Varlos?
Do you need me standing here anymore? I'm sorry. Yeah.
Oh, you don't have any? Okay, Sue, do you agree?
I do have a question, maybe staff would know. Between both the first applicant and the second applicant, how much was done to discover what it was like if they did go ahead and build the underground parking? Yes, soils.
I guess I'm having a hard time understanding the question. So how much was done?
So we did have a report, like we just heard just a minute ago, about that they would need sandbags and that they would, should raise things higher. I was just questioning if, if there's any other information about what it would be like to actually have underground parking? Did they learn anything new during those years?
No, no, my understanding is most of that came out of the initial entitlement phase for the project. Most of that information.
2007?
Yes, 2006, '07.
Thank you.
Yeah, I really just appreciate planning commission's very thorough and thoughtful process. I've, I've either been to or watched some of the, your sessions where you, where you've gone through this, so I stand by your decision. Thank you.
John?
I would, I would echo that. Thank you to the planning commission. And I'm ready to make a motion if, if, what's that?
She just pressed her button.
Okay.
Sue Varlos?
I have a couple of questions about this. I know there were two different owners, so they have only been granted, this current owner has only been granted three extensions. If the current owner was willing to make the changes, such as the inclusionary zoning and the other updated items, could they still continue the same project, or would it need to be started again because of these current changes?
So that's, that's kind of the crux of the issue we're dealing with here, in addition to, you know, some of the safety issues with the seawall. But in order to comply today with the stormwater requirements in place, it would require a new site plan. And so the actual project they would be constructing is not the same as the one that was approved. And so there's been no public participation or input with, with that layout. And so, you know, I'll just say that when either planning commission or city council approves a development entitlement, it's, staff's charged to make sure it's developed the way you approved it. And so if we went back and said, okay, well, we can change this, it'll look complete, potentially very much different than, than the project that was approved.
Okay.
Do you have any comments to the fact that he said that we were sealed better shut, we were shut and sealed better than the White House in regards to communication? Is there any comments from staff?
Other, no, I, I, I think we try to be open and communicative with our applicants. I understand this is very frustrating for them and that they might not necessarily feel that way.
Yeah, that was another concern that I had, that he was just, you were negotiating certain things, not that you know whether or not the planning commission is going to approve the extension or not, but he wasn't aware at the time that it was likely not to get approved.
So on that particular point, I'll say that as long as somebody's entitlements are valid, we are obligated as staff to continue to process that application, because they have up until the day before their entitlements expire to pull building permits. And if we actually stopped and said, well, we don't think we're going to extend your permits, we would be criticized on the other end for that as well. So we diligently worked on their project as they requested to try to get them set up to pull building permits before their deadline. And so that is the reason, you know, why some of the dates are being called into question, but it is because we are, that, we are required to diligently process a project that has entitlements.
Thank you.
I would just like to ask Tom Clifford if there's any comments you wanted to make?
There's not really all that much to add. I would want to make sure that council knew that the planning commission extended the hearing twice, once on its own recommendation to do so, and then once at the request of the applicant. We want, we wanted to make absolutely certain that they had plenty of time to prepare before they came before us, and they did have that time. And it was a unanimous decision by the planning commission, and that was all seven planning commissioners were at that hearing.
Sue, do you agree?
Right, I believe, I do compliment staff on their thoroughness, and I was here when the first applicant came forward. And the picture in the presentation on verse 22, 2016, is typical of what was happening then, and the argument then before council was that those were one in 100-year events. And the day that that was before council was a very nice sunny day, and that's exactly what we saw at 6:30 before the seven o'clock meeting. And as we all know, weather has changed, the seawall, or whatever you want to call it, has been affected. There, I do drive in that area a lot, and as you can see, the street also slopes, and there's a lot of water. I was there when these, the situation was very dramatic, and the waves were going over, I didn't actually see it, but it was that day, that the waves actually went over the houses and flooded right up to the front steps on some of the condos near Paloma. Also, then and now, I'm still very, very much concerned about the drainage to the ocean and how all of that would affect the neighbors to the north. There's a deep cut, or slice, or however you want to put it, that was very concerning to me then, which I think with underground parking and such, is still a grave, grave concern, and I think that what has happened in the area all along the coast of bluff falling down, whether it's fortified or not, I think does need to be looked at.
Okay. So any other comments? I know John wanted to make a motion. Okay.
I move to adopt the attached resolution to deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's denial of a request to extend the expiration dates of site development permit PSD-757-06, use permit UP965-06, and tentative subdivision map SUB-211-06.
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions from anybody?
Denying the appeal.
It's denying the appeal. This means he, his motion is not to build the project, uphold the planning commission, correct?
Yes.
Not to grant the extension.
Not to grant the extension. Yeah.
That motion passes 5-0, so we uphold the planning commission's decision. Does any council member need a break?
Yes.
Sue, do you agree? Okay, we have a five-minute break, please.
Thank you, Lee.
We're moving on to items for consideration, and we're moving on to item number seven, award of construction contract to Sierra Mountain Construction.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the Pacifica City Council. My name is Lorenzo Hines, Assistant City Manager. I'm here with the Deputy Director over the wastewater treatment plant, Louis Sun, and we're here to give you a little background on the awarding of the contract for the installation of the EQ Basin. As you know, we've had a number of issues with the sanitary sewer overflows, and in June 2011, we entered into a consent decree. It followed that sort of was preceded by a cease and desist order. And as a result of those two items, we had entered into a sewer system management plan, which was the genesis for the need for the equalization basin, as well as some other capital projects. This contract will allow us to move forward with the first step in addressing that sort of collection system master plan and by awarding the contract for the EQ Basin and getting that project started. Deputy Director Sun, we'll go through the specifics of the award process, and I thank you. And we'll take questions at any time during the conversation.
Thank you, Lorenzo. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. I'm going to take you through the award timeline. This started February 6 of this year, when the City of Pacifica Planning Commission certified and adopted the final mitigated negative declaration, and also the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approved the use permit and site development permit for the project. But on February 16, this was appealed, and on March 13, the City Council upheld the planning commission's finding and adopted the EQ Basin project and approved the use and site development permit. So on March 16 of this year, public notice of bid was advertised in San Mateo Times and also Pacifica Tribune newspapers. The team also reached out to prospective bidders via emails and phone calls, just notifying them about the project. We also had this out, setting up in a project portal on electronic plan room service called Barker Blue. On March 29, a mandatory pre-bid meeting and site visit for contractors were held at the community center. And on April 27, bids were received from four construction companies. And those four are the following: Sierra Mountain Construction Incorporated, SMCI, Gordon Ball, McGuire &amp; Hester, and Shamick &amp; Nicholson. The apparent low bidder was Sierra Mountain Construction Incorporated with a bid of $17,348,000. All four bids are above the original engineer estimate of $16.5 million. SMCI is based in Sonora, California. Documentation provided by SMCI shown they have experience in wastewater-related projects. Staff conducted experience and qualification review, and during the review, several items of potential concern were identified, and staff requested and receive additional clarification from SMCI regarding these items. The staff researched each and every one of these potential concerns and was able to find reasonable explanation for these concern items. It is also noted that SMCI and all their subcontractors contain ballot and current California contractor license registrations, and they are registered with the California Department of Industrial Relations as public work contractors. The reference check for SMCI subcontractors, Malcolm Drilling and Blaca Construction, received very positive feedback. Staff conducted its due diligence on the bid submission received from SMCI, and staff finds SMCI's bid to be acceptable, and staff recommends proceed with the award of the wet weather equalization project to SMCI. In addition, because of project complexity, staff recommends a total budget of $21,685,000 for the project to cover construction contingencies. Staff also recommends the approval of the Second Amendment in the amount of $198,600 with our designer, Friar, and Loretta. During the final mitigated negative declaration and also the mitigation monitoring and reporting program phase, and also the bidding phase of the project, it was determined that additional work was required, and this additional work was not covered in the original agreement. The Second Amendment is for additional service during these phases, and it's also additional money for the construction phase as well. It is estimated that the whole project, including design and engineering support, SEQA, project and construction management, and construction and other miscellaneous expense, will have a total cost of $24.5 million. The city will issue revenue bonds to support the installation of the EQ Basin, and the bonds will be supported by revenues from future source fees. Staff recommended actions is to move and prove the unauthorized, number one, the award of construction contract to Sierra Mountain Construction Incorporated in the amount of $17,348,000 for the wet weather equalization project. Number two, contingency costs of up to $4,337,000. And number three, Second Amendment to the consultant service agreement between the City of Pacifica and Friar and Loretta in the amount of $198,600. And lastly, number four, is to authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents associated with this project. At this time, staff is available for any questions.
Is there any questions? John?
So, the original engineer's estimate of $16.5 million, when was that made?
This was presented December 12, the City Council presentation for the project.
Okay, so between December 12 and now, you know, basically, it cost $800,000 more. That's not too bad, considering the way things are going. The other question I had was on the contingencies. The contingencies are listed at 25% of the construction contract, and I wondered if they're the same thing, you know, apples to apples, as the sewer fees that we approved, which were dependent on contingencies of 40%.
All right, we are still sharpening our pencils to reconcile those two things. Right now, we're just trying to get this piece of the puzzle in play, because we've got a timeline. As far as the cost, how it affects the rates, all that'll be worked out once we get this taken care of. I think I understand where you're going, but I need a little more time to make it all work.
Yeah, and just to make it crystal clear where I'm going with this, or where I went, is that the sewer fees that we have approved were approved on the basis that a 40% contingency over and above the construction contract. And, you know, that was either wise or not wise, depending on where you sit, but that's what it was. And this one, we've gotten by for 25%.
Right.
And that's all the questions I have.
Sue Vanderlaas?
Seventeen people went out representing 16 companies, and only four bids came back. Is that normal?
It's pretty standard. A lot of people were there, were subcontractors, they're not necessarily general contractors. So, they were there to, you know, scope and take into project. Typically, you have less general contractors bidding.
Okay, thank you.
Yudra?
So, I see that the company, SMCI, has all of their current California contractor licenses and their industrial, their Department of Industrial Relations. There was an issue that we encountered back on Esplanade when we were doing the demo there, where we had to have an emergency council session, because the company that we hired did not have all their certifications. And I did ask Director Ocampo to make sure that that one's on your checklist. I can't remember off the top of my head which one that was, but I just want to make sure that we're covered.
Yes, it was the DIR, which is covered.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I guess, open the public hearing. Sorry, I have no yellow cards. Is there anybody in the public that we should just speak on? Item seven, see and none. I close the public hearing, bring it back to council for further discussion or a motion.
I'm ready to make a motion. I move to approve and authorize the award of construction contract to Sierra Mountain Construction Incorporated, Attachment One, in the amount of $17,348,000 for the wet weather equalization project. Two, contingency costs up to $4,337,000. Three, Second Amendment to the consultant services agreement between the City of Pacifica and Friar &amp; Loretta Incorporated in the amount of $198,600 to provide additional engineering services for the wet weather equalization basin project, Attachment Two. And four, the city manager to execute all necessary documents associated with the project.
Do we need to say that last sentence? These items, in addition to previously approved project costs, will bring the total cost to 24 or 25... No, okay. I need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any comments? Vote. And item number seven passes 5-0, passes unanimously. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to number eight, resolution authorizing issuance and sale of wastewater revenue bonds. Staff report, please.
Yes, sir. So, I have a short presentation for you. Before I get started, I would like our folks, we've got our financial advisor, Peter Wong, we've got our bond counsel, Chick Adams here, and we've got our underwriter, Scott Nagelson. And, gentlemen, if you could join me up at the table. And so while they're on their way up, I again put together a, just a little short primer for today's or tonight's topic, just to give an overview of the bonds, bonds in general, that they're a common type of long-term financing for large capital needs. They represent a contractual promise by the issuing agency, that's us, to pay investors, that's the bondholders. And so we're going to pay these investors a specific sum of money at a designated maturity date, periodic fixed interest payments, usually on a semi-annual basis. Revenue bonds, which we are seeking your authorization to release, revenue bonds are secured by a specific revenue stream, i.e. the revenues from the wastewater treatment program. The issuance and sale of our wastewater revenue bonds, we're asking for the authority to a maximum of $27 million to provide financing for the improvements to the wastewater system. As I mentioned, funding source for the installation of the wet weather equalization basement and the other improvements to the wastewater system are funded by the revenues for the wastewater treatment program. The figure from the last item, $24,500,000, while that is the amount of the project, we are asking for a maximum of $27 million because of interest cost and to address unforeseen financing costs or changes in interest rates that may arise prior to the issuance of bonds. So, we figured that the maximum that this transaction should cost is $27 million. If it comes in lower than fine, you know, we'll be fine with the lower figure, but we don't want to be in a situation where we have to come back to you. As I mentioned earlier, the bond issuance team, Scott Nagelson down to my far left, Peter Wong to my near left, Chick Adams right in the middle, and Jacqueline Jennings is the underwriter counsel, and she's not here with us, but she's always sort of here in spirit. The most important document that's in the packet right now in relation to the wastewater revenue bonds is the POS statement, or the Preliminary Official Statement. This contains the estimated sources and uses of funds, the purpose of the funds, the terms relating to the bonds, the source of the security for repayment, and information regarding the city's finances. It's a pretty comprehensive document. And that completes my presentation. Ed, can you... Thank you. And so, I am here to entertain any questions, or we are here to entertain any questions?
I know you said it, but we'll say it again. It's my understanding that these bonds are not a mortgage, that they are secured by the sewer fees that we charge, and so that they're different from, for instance, the certificates of participation.
Right.
Okay. It says in the staff report, the bond issue will be supported by revenues from the proposed sewer rates for 2017 to 2022, and I assume that it's for a 30-year period, so it'll be 25 years beyond that?
Yes, it'll be supported by the revenues and the rates that are in place during the life of the bond.
And do you know what rating Standard &amp; Poor's gave us?
I believe Standard &amp; Poor's is still working on our rating.
Still contemplating.
Yeah, we've given them everything they've asked for, and we're just waiting right now. If it's good news, trust me, you'll know pretty quickly.
If it's bad news, you'll run high.
I'll let you know, I'll let you know, but we're being optimistic here. You'll see it in an email, if it's what I hope it is.
So, you know, roughly, what is the range of interest rates that we're looking at here? And, you know, without, I'm not going to hold you to this, obviously, but...
Sure. I'm Scott Nagelson, I'm with U.S. Bank, the underwriter of the bonds. We did a run last week to get a handle on not to exceed mounts and things like that, and the all-in interest cost, crunching in all the costs of issuing the bonds, was about 3.85% for the 25-year period.
And so the interest will run, on $27 million, will run somewhere less than $27 million, I take it, probably 23, or if that 3.85 figure holds up.
Total interest over the life of the bonds?
Yeah.
Well, let me just tell you this, so if we were pricing this deal right now, the total par amount would be well under $27 million, we'd be less than $24 million. Now, we've got several weeks until we're going to, you know, be in the market with these, so the total interest over the life of the bonds would be about $20 million on current market conditions, yes.
Yeah. Okay. And do the $27 million, does that include all the financing costs, or are some of those wrapped into the interest?
Par amount would include everything that is being financed, whether it's cost of issuance or project cost.
In the $27 million?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Simon? Are we, now, I imagine we're probably in a lower point of the interest rate cycle, but are we adding any sort of put or call options on these bonds, or is it pretty much straightforward? And are you going to be doing a serial issue?
No, these are straight fixed income bonds, is that what you're asking? Not variable rate, there's no other derivative or swap, nothing?
Okay, so there's no put or call options to the investors at all? So, it's just pretty much straight vanilla bond? Okay, okay. And, now, I know, was U.S. Bank that had the money for our COP for like the 1.5 mil? Can you describe, maybe you guys weren't here for that one, but anyhow, can you describe, because there was concern at the, from the public at the last meeting about, were we going to take this and just throw in the general fund and spend it? So, I was just wondering if we can have a brief description of how this money will be treated versus general fund money.
I'm sorry.
Yes, my name is Chick Adams, I'm with the law firm of Jones Hall in San Francisco, we're bond counsel. The documents are very strict. The proceeds of the bonds are being deposited with a trustee bank, and may only be requisitioned through a very formal process with all documentation, and only for the purpose of funding the project. There's nothing that would permit them to be used for any other purpose.
So, basically, what you're saying to, like, the general public, there's a third-party administ, trustee for the funds that are keeping the checkbook, and once the city receives a bill, they have to like approve it, and then they send it to the trustee who will then issue the check?
That's exactly right, with a requisition and invoices attached, so there's full documentation showing the payment, yes.
Okay, and so there's no chance, 0% chance that this will go into the general fund?
No, absent extraordinary fraud and forgery, no.
Okay, and it is audited by the Security and Exchange Commission, being it's a registered security?
We're actually exempt from the registration requirements, but not the anti-fraud requirements, so everybody on the financing team takes great pains to make sure that there's full disclosure and compliance with all federal securities law, yes.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to, you know, clarify that, because there's a lot of questions about that. John?
In the staff report, it says if the project final expenditures are less than originally anticipated, that is, the expenditures for the installation of the equalization basin, the remaining funds will be used to address capital improvements necessary to address consent decree compliance, that is, compliance with the, basically with lawsuit...
The CDO, the cease and desist order, and the, yes.
Right, okay.
So, if there's anything left, we still have work to do to get out from under those two items.
Okay. Thanks.
Going to open the public hearing, unless there's a council person that has a question? Okay. Okay, open the public hearing. I have two cards. First is Tree Stier, and then Cynthia Kaufman.
This is the part where I thought we were going to have the Resolution Number 1-2016, the Board of Directors of the City of the Pacific Financing Authority, to discuss the certificates of participation, but obviously not. So, but I still would like to make a comment that I think the public needs to be more informed about any more bond issues, because they've been left in the dark regarding the certificates of participation. And if you read back on some of your own communications, it's kind of a laughing matter in some of your comments. It seems to me, since the public is paying one of the highest sewer taxes here in the county, that we should be the investors. I mean, are we going to get any money back for our dollar, or just a few people here that got the bucks that are going to invest? I mean, do you people really know what you're doing up there? I don't think so. But it needs more public input, I'll tell you that, just like the certificates of participation. So I'm against it.
Cynthia Kaufman?
Just a short comment, I know you guys are doing a really great job, and this sounds like you've thought it through with a lot of depth, and I just wanted, just a little tiny bit tweak, just to think about for the future, which is that U.S. Bank is invested in the Dakota Access Pipeline, and I just think in the future, if it's possible to avoid banks that have such immoral investments, that that would be a really good thing. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments from the public? Okay, I close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Is there any deliberation or comments?
I have a question about how we, procedurally, how we go about this for the city attorney, and we have two resolutions. One is from the Board of Directors of the City of Pacifica Financing Authority, and the other is from the City Council of the City of Pacifica. And do we just adopt the recommended action and it's all taken care of, or what?
Well, this is a joint meeting, so the council is acting as both the authority and the city council, and we agendized it specifically for this item, so that you could approve both resolutions in one motion.
Okay.
Right, it's all part of the same agenda item.
All right.
So does someone, John, you want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion, yeah.
And so the resolution would be to move to adopt the resolutions attached of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and the Board of Directors of the City of Pacifica Financing Authority.
Okay. And if I could just jump in, I would like to emphasize, the resolutions are virtually identical, there's no substantive difference between them.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, I'm just going to read the recommended action and see if that'll be good enough. I think it will.
Or how about if I read it, and then you can just?
Okay.
Okay? So, the recommended action would be adopt the attached resolutions by the City Council of the City of Pacifica and the City of Pacifica Financ, and the Board of Directors of the City of Pacifica Financing Authority, authorizing issuance and sale of wastewater revenue bonds by the City of Pacifica Financing Authority in the maximum amount of 27 million to provide financing for improvements to the wastewater system and approving related documents and actions.
So moved.
Here, a second. Sue Verralas?
I'll second.
Comments? Vote, please. Okay, in that motion, item eight passes 8-0, excuse me, item eight passes 5-0 unanimously. Okay? Okay, next is item number nine, review the current activities of the Rent Advisory Task Force. Thank you, gentlemen.
Staff was asked to prepare this agenda item so that the council could discuss the Rent Advisory Task Force charter and the continued need to prepare an advisory measure for Pacifica. Some background for the council and for the public, maybe here are watching, on January 25th in 2016, the City Council directed formation of an advisory committee consisting of tenants and landlords and neutral parties to develop an advisory measure addressing landlord-tenant relations. Based on direction from council, staff invited six members of the community, two each representing Pacifica tenants, apartment owners, and impartial community members to participate on the task force. The task force has been meeting regularly since December 2016, and has evaluated data about Pacifica's rental housing stock and renter population. The task force reached consensus on the topic areas that Pacifica's rent advisory measure should address, which were listed in the written staff report. This agenda item was requested after recent council actions that placed a rent stabilization and just cause eviction ordinance on the November ballot and adoption of an interim ordinance, which was to take effect on May 24th. Since then, the city received a referendum petition protesting the interim ordinance, which suspends its effective date. And the city and county election officials are in the process of verifying the number of signatures and certifying those signatures for the referendum. The task force also discussed their future in the context of council actions on rent stabilization. There was acknowledgement that a rent advisory measure could provide a community benefit to those rental units that are exempt from the ordinance, if it is approved by the voters in November, and would provide a community-wide benefit if the ballot measure is not adopted by the voters. So staff's recommendation is to place the activities of the task force on hiatus until the results of the election are known, and at that time, if the council continues to desire that an advisory measure be prepared, the task force can focus its efforts either on the units exempt from the measure that would be adopted by the voters, or if not, rental units in general, citywide. I'd be happy to answer, any questions?
Any questions for staff? Dieter?
The only question I would have is on the recommended action, would there be any opportunity to, it says, place the task force on hiatus until the result of the November 2017 ballot, but also that council would revisit the charter at that time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The other, Sue Verralas?
I think you answered this, but the task force themselves, did they want to continue to meet, or did they feel that it was best to go on the hiatus?
They were interested in continuing to meet.
Okay.
They did, they did struggle with what their purpose was in light of the ballot measure and the interim ordinance that was adopted, but they did feel like they were working collaboratively and were going to produce a document of value to the community.
I've been to the meetings, they work really well together and seem to have good knowledge.
Dieter?
That's a good question. And so further to that, how much time is staff spending on that task force right now?
I'd have to ask Associate Planner Murdock, he is the primary staff person for the...
Just a rough estimate, is it two hours a week, less than, more?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It would depend on the subject matter for the meeting. Some meetings have taken six to eight hours of preparation with research and summarizing the particular issue, some have taken just a couple hours, so maybe the average is three to four hours.
Three to four hours a week, a month?
Three to four hours per meeting. We were averaging maybe a meeting every two to three weeks, thereabouts, so.
Okay.
Six to eight hours a month, perhaps.
Okay, thanks.
Christian? I have a, do you think there would be a value in continuing it for the advisory, Rent Advisory Board to cover those items that are exempt under the rent control ordinance on the ballot? For basically single-family homes and other units?
I think that that's certainly a policy decision for the council. My opinion is that there would be some utility to having an advisory measure, whether the time to finalize that is now or later, once we know the outcome, it's probably not a question for me to weigh in on.
But an advisory measure for units exempt from the rent control ordinance would still be totally unregulated, correct? Even if it passes, it would be totally unregulated, and the advisory could be placed on, could be turned on if it was, if it was either fail or pass in November, right?
Well, I think there's a scenario where if the council chose to do so, it could have the task force continue its work, prepare the measure, and then consider it at a time of its choosing, whether that's upon completion or upon knowing the results of the election. It's certainly entirely up to the council when to enact or adopt such an advisory measure. Again, as you've touched on, Mr. Mayor, there are many units that people rent in the community that would be exempt from rent stabilization and just cause eviction ordinance, if that were to pass in November. And so an advisory measure would provide guidelines, and I think that's what the council was looking for when it sought out to have this advisory measure developed, to provide some ground rules and some best practices for people to follow, for landlords and for renters, to get along better, and to hopefully minimize the opportunity for conflict that the council is aware of in the rental market.
Thank you. Sue DeGruy?
Did we have a contract with a facilitator, like, I think it was Conflict Resolution? Is they actually continued, were they involved?
Yes, they are our facilitator for the task force meetings, that, put it in the Conflict Resolution Center.
And how much do we pay, and did we have a contract, and is that contract finished?
The contract is still open, it was a total of $20,000.
So how does that work?
Facilitation.
How much have they used of that, I guess, my question?
We haven't been billed.
Okay, so that was like a contract up to 20,000?
Right, for the entire, to getting to the conclusion of the process.
And they've been regular?
Oh, yeah.
And that's been working out?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of comment cards, so, okay to go to the public? Okay. Tree Stier and Tiger Big Stick, and those are the only two cards I have.
Well, I think this is just premature, because it hasn't even gone on the ballot yet. Furthermore, I went to see Steve Wagstaff, and I don't know if he made a decision on you, Sue, yet, but you are in violation, and not only that, it's conflict of interest to those of us that ran for city council at the same time you did, because you committed perjury and we didn't. So I want that looked into, plus the fact that Mike O'Neill and Sue, you're both in real estate, so you should have rescued yourself. If you had, you wouldn't have had a quorum, period, but I'll wait for his decision. Thank you.
Tiger?
Good evening, and once again, Honorable Mayor and Council, I am Tiger Jess Fruels, Big Stick of Pacifica. I do serve on the Rent Advisory Task Force, and my comments are my perspective on things, and in no way represent the group as a whole. I have some notes, a lot of it is stuff you've already read or that Tina's gone over, but I want to flesh out a little bit, some of what hasn't been read, because some of the people watching maybe didn't read it. So I fall under the heading of one of those representative of tenants, that is, I maintain a primary residence in a rental property within Pacifica, and generally, I am a proponent of rent stabilization. The task force so far, as Tina was reading, has reached consensus on the topic areas that Pacifica's rent advisory measure should address. Those consensus-reached topics are predictable modest rent increases, appropriate cause for terminating tenancies, amortized, amortized cost recovery for landlord capital improvements, expedited city permitting for improvement projects, first right of return for tenants displaced by repairs to their unit, timely responses to tenant repair and maintenance requests, landlord consideration of tenant hardships, creation of a housing resource list including local providers of emergency financial assistance, short-term rental guidelines, development of additional rental housing. And I wrote one more note, and we've been having this discussion all without, you know, basically hating each other. We've been listening to each other, we've been creating within the room itself the very base, very basis for what I think we all want in our community, basically a dream to share together. To my mind, it makes a lot of sense to start the process of whatever we're doing in our town with the process that we've been enjoying in that room at those meetings. And though we haven't gotten far, I feel like we've been setting a mood for civility amongst groups that don't always share the same opinions. We've been discussing things, listening to each other, conversing with each other, and I think that that process is much harder to do at this level, when it's escalated to the point of people's homes and investments are, from their perspective, jeopardized, and so they come into the room freaked out to begin with, not to come down and have a conversation, but, you know, a natural inclination to scream at each other instead. Regardless of November, I recognize the wisdom of continuing after in November to help those not covered by the ordinance, such as I have been most of my life in this town, or two, to get back to the hard work of giving high civility the opportunity to circumvent more extreme means. Thank you.
Sue DeGruy?
That's from the other time.
I have no more yellow cards, so I close the public comments, bring it back to council. Dieter?
I'm very appreciative of all of the piece that has come out of the Rent Advisory Task Force, and I'm most concerned about the community, and then I'm also concerned about our staff time and money. So, I'd like to, if we don't ask, we don't get, so see if we can maybe get a cost-to-date, even if it was a contract, is there a way that kind of maybe we can split the difference, or something like that? And because it is staff's recommendation to put it on hiatus, and because we don't really have a charter right now, I would most likely go with the recommended action, and just save us all a little time right now, and then be able to put our focus in the new year on what we really need to do, and hope to reinvigorate that group. And I'm ready to make a motion unless someone else has a comment.
Sue Verralas?
I would be inclined to disagree. I think they're doing great work. I think that it takes time to develop this, and I'd like to see them continue.
Just have a question, so, Tina, did you say you were in on the meetings?
I attend probably 50% to 75% of them.
So it was somewhat based on the Healsburg advisory, correct?
That was our basis, but from there, the task force really looked at what is, what is needed for Pacifica, but the Healsburg was our basis, yes.
Okay, so it did deviate a little bit from that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
I would tend to feel since that we know for, or we know for certainty there's an item on the ballot in November, but we also know for certainty that there are certain dwelling units that are specifically exempt from the ordinance, whether it passes or does not pass. So I feel it would be good to have some sort of mechanism in place, advisory or whatever, for those units that are exempt from the ordinance already, and if the ordinance should fail, we would then have at least the beginnings of a working group, because I know it's a lot easier to maintain something than to... lot easier to maintain something than to kind of like, stop it and then try to start it again. And I just think it would be wiser to, you know, maybe not have the meetings as often for, in reference, out of deference to staff time, but I, since we know there will be units that will not be covered by rent control, then it would be prudent, I think, to have some sort of advisory platform in place for them. Sue DeGruy?
I just have a question, do we, is this something we could actually vote on, because don't we need to know the amount of money available or whether we need more money or to continue?
No, the way their billing structure was set up is, that's the amount until--
So, they're going to achieve it--
They're going to achieve--
Under that amount regardless of the amount of time that's involved?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, then, press a button, we'll get a motion. Sue DeGruy?
Well, no, it wasn't a motion, actually, it's a comment, so, I'm thinking, I have some opposite thoughts on the whole issue, but I think basically having it meet at least some time, and are we going to leave that to discretion of staff or how, so that, two things, one, the folks keep their momentum, and two, because it would affect rentals that are not under the ordinance, so I'm in favor of staying on track and not having to start brand-new.
Then, I need a motion from somebody. John, you haven't said anything, you want to say anything? Okay, I need a motion from somebody, otherwise it's going to be a really long night.
I think I'm not going to waste my breath on this one.
It just needs to be reworked, the advisory, okay. Please, okay, proposed action, please activities, please continue activities of the Rent Advisory Task Force until the results of the November, well, please continue activities of the Rent Advisory Task Force until January 2018, when council may revisit the charter.
I don't know, I'm looking at the city attorney, I don't know if we need a motion really, except that, because the direction is that we continue with the current--
Well, yes, thank you for bringing me into the loop. What I've heard from some council members who want to pursue the task force is, are those members desirous of changing the charter? Because the charter currently is, I believe, pursuit of an advisory measure for units in general, not simply those that are exempt under our proposed November ballot ordinance. So, my suggestion is that if there is a majority of the council that would like the task force to continue, but with a different charter or a different goal--
Can I read what the goal is?
Yes, that'd be great.
It's very general, it doesn't apply, it says, "To develop a rent advisory measure for adoption by city council that identifies a set of principles to engender mutual respect and productive communication among and between property owners and renters, and that result instability and predictability for both."
So, to your question, though, you're asking whether, okay, so I'm speaking for myself, am I honing it in onto those properties that are not involved with the ordinance? I would say yes, because the ordinance on the ballot is a big thing, and I wouldn't want to have attention split to kind of try to figure out what that means. Is there anybody who is against it that would want to give me some arguments in any direction?
I would say, I would say that given what you just read as the goal, it's broad enough where, whether the stabilization measure passes or fails in November, you could plug in apartments or single-family homes or duplexes, whatever, in there. So, I would be willing just to keep the same charter, our goal, as we now have, ongoing, because it's, I think it meets all needs right now, and if we need to revisit it first quarter next year, then we do.
So, you're saying do not specify just for those not under the ordinance?
Correct, because you don't know whether it's going to win or pass, win or fail.
No, I'm just clarifying what you said.
Okay, so, that's my inclination, leave it as is, it's broad enough--
Then, then, then there is no action that needs to be taken?
Okay.
Okay, but I'm asking the other two, do you have any things you want me to hear? Because, right at the moment, I'm not in favor of that. I was in favor of being specific towards those, working towards those that are not on the ordinance, for the reason given, I don't want people to get confused. The ordinance is the ordinance, and it's there for a specific purpose, and I don't want to deflect from that purpose.
Okay.
I'm lit up.
Yeah, go ahead, Deirdre.
Wild idea. If our contract says that we have to come to a resolution, and say we meet every other month, we'll extend probably past, and we don't come to a resolution, we extend past our 2017 ballot, at that time, we're kind of closer to knowing what we need to do. So, it's kind of more like, I'm not saying we drag it out, but was there a timeframe for what we needed to accomplish for the contract?
I don't believe that there was a strict timeframe.
So, maybe it's kind of like, you know, we meet a couple more times this year, so we do every other month, right? Kind of as-is, you know, one of the members spoke to some of the things that they were talking about, and to me, that sounded like good, valid stuff. To get any more specific, I agree with Sue DeGruy that it's confusing right now with what's on the ballot, so, if the task force just kind of does what they're, they need to do for the next couple of months, but every other month, we have, we have a decision from the community, and then it's more like, oh, now we can come to more of a decision, and we still have our more meetings with, you know, it's kind of, I don't know if it's a silly idea, but it's just a thought, I just, I'm against city staff spending one full day a month getting ready for these things, that there's a lot more that you're going to have to do to prepare for November regardless. And, so that's it. So, Sue DeGruy, I don't really, you know, I'm not supportive of the charter as it is, but if that's, you know, if that's kind of how, what everyone else thinks, and I know that's not what you think, you'd like to see it more specific, I think actually getting more specific would be more confusing.
Sue Varanous?
I think the charter is quite broad and very easy to understand, and this is about people, this is about what we were talking about before, civility and people treating each other like people, and I think that this advisory is important, as important as all the other things that we've been working on, and important to spend time on, and the money that we've already spent.
John?
I believe that the Advisory Task Force has a potential of confusing voters for the November ballot, and I think it should be suspended until after.
Any other lights? Now, the direction, I believe, is unclear.
I'm ready to make a motion, but I don't, okay, I'll go for it.
Go ahead.
Okay, actually, I lost it, hang on. I will make a motion to, to take the advice of the recommended action and place activities of the Rent Advisory Task Force on hiatus until the result of the November 2017 ballot measure regarding the Pacifica Community Preservation, Rent Stabilization, and Renters' Rights Act is known.
I'll second.
Just for clarity, because you're taking the statement that's in the, that's in the agenda, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say is, I believe it's, I'm voting no on the resolution, because I believe that it would be more beneficial, since we know after the election in November, there are going to be units, either yea or nay on the election, that are not going to be covered, that this will leave us that many months ahead. I'm perfectly willing for the Rent Advisory Board not to come out with any sort of recommendations or anything prior to the election. I mean, I can understand where you might come with the confusion, so, that's why I'm going to vote no on this motion. Go ahead.
So, for the same reason of specificity that I stated before, I will vote yes, because I think it can cause confusion not to be specific.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, call for vote? Passes three to two for item number nine, and next we go to item number 10, consideration of a request by Councilmember Martin that the city transmit a letter to Caltrans and the San Mateo Transportation Authority requesting the repurposing of funds previously designated for widening Highway One, Calera Creek Parkway, Calera Parkway Project. Staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On April 24th, the city council decided not to place a measure on the ballot regarding the development of throughways on Highway One, otherwise known as the Calera Parkway Project. At that same meeting, Councilmember Martin read a letter that she proposed sending to Caltrans and the San Mateo Transportation Authority that would be intended to redirect funds allocated for the Calera Parkway Project to other infrastructure needs in the city of Pacifica. That draft letter has been reviewed by Public Works Director, and he has prepared a letter as well that he believes would better suit the goals of Councilmember Martin. Both Councilmember Martin's letter and the Public Works Director's draft letter have been attached to the staff report. Unfortunately, the Public Works Director is away on a long planned vacation. I've not had a chance to talk to him in detail about his proposed letter. At the same time, I believe it's on the right track. So, our recommendation is to the council is that staff work with Councilmember Martin to improve upon the draft letter prepared by the Public Works Director, and bring back a proposed final draft letter for consideration by the entire council at the regular meeting, regular city council meeting of June 12th.
Okay, staff report? Any comments from council, or do you want me to go direct to public record, public card? Okay, open up the public hearing. I have several cards, first off, up is Cynthia Kaufman, and then Steve Sinai, and then Bill Collins.
I mostly just wanted to say thank you for the work that you've done in stopping this project. I've been very happy with the work that the council has done on this, and I think the letter is really important, I don't have any opinion about which letter, but I just think it's very, very important that, that the Caltrans and the Transit Authority understand that the city of Pacifica really does not want this project, so that it doesn't sort of lurk in the system, that it's really, it's really clearly, the project is clearly dead. And I so appreciate the work that you've done to come up with alternatives, and I think it's going to be really exciting to see the creative ways we can solve the problem of traffic and make that stretch of highway something really nice and something that really works for all of us. So, thank you for your work.
Steve Sinai, Bill Collins, Tiger.
Heather, I'm Steve Sinai. Deirdre seems to be leading the charge to sabotage highway widening, so let's revisit how Deirdre got her seat on council. City council elections start out as nonpartisan. By seeking the endorsement of the San Mateo County Democratic Central Committee, Deirdre changed the classification of the election from nonpartisan to partisan. The federal Hatch Act says government employees can't run in partisan elections, so VA employee Marianne Nyhart was forced to drop out. Deirdre guaranteed herself a seat on council by using an obscure federal rule to eliminate an opponent rather than letting Pacifica voters decide. That action was criticized Pacifica State Assemblyman Kevin Mullin, Pacifica State Senator Jerry Hill, and Pacifica Congresswoman Jackie Spear. In commenting on what happened, Spear said, "The Hatch Act should never result in a different entity other than the state of California, effective the way determining that a race is partisan." For lack of a better term, a three-person MB majority seems to think it has a mandate to cram whatever it wants down people's throats. Remember, this majority wasn't chosen by voters. Once again, Deirdre, along with John Keener and Sue DeGruy, are showing contempt for Pacifica voters by not allowing a vote on highway widening. They passed a rule saying highway widening can't occur without a seat-wide vote, then refused to hold a vote. How blatantly hypocritical and anti-democratic can you get? Then they say, "Let's review alternatives," except for the alternative that Caltrans and the county have already studied and concluded is the best one. Sorry, but buses, car pools, bikes, and telling people to work from home aren't viable solutions for traffic. Just as with rent control, I'm asking city council to show respect for all voters, not just for your particular tribe of supporters. Let's have a citywide vote on highway widening, see what the majority wants. If you want to hire an independent traffic engineer to study alternatives and make recommendations in the meantime, that's fine. If people vote against widening, so be it, the issue's off the table. If they vote in favor of widening, you get a chance to correct your actions. What could be wrong with that? If you're so sure you represent the majority of you, why are you afraid of holding a vote? Thank you. I think you've very thick skins.
Okay. Bill Collins, Tiger Big Stick, Chaya Gordon.
Highway One, of course, is four lanes, used to be two, and it backs up in some places and not in others. I don't see it back up in Manor or Fairmont, but where it does back up is at the intersections, and you are on the right path of looking into quicker, real, less disruptive solutions to the backups that do occur at the intersections. You've already started on that path, it's the smart path, it's the path that Pacificans want. We don't want this disruptive construction project in the middle of our city with lanes closed for God knows how long. This is Caltrans specialty, is shutting down lanes and, and cost overruns and taking longer on a project, that's, that's what Caltrans does. So, we don't want that in Pacifica, because you'll have backups probably to the Taco Bell. So, please, continue on the path you're on. You know, whenever you widen highways, those new lanes fill up. They always fill up. I mean, how long do you think you're going to buy open space? I mean, it's on a lane, I mean, it's like people don't have a constitutional right to commute to work with nobody else in the car, and that's, you know, the whole premise of this widening is so people can drive alone, and that's just a given. It's, you know, we need to grow up in Pacifica and get with the program. The Bay Area's got real transportation systems, and we are still stuck in the 1960s. This is a 1960s solution to real traffic backups, and we need to be modern about this and live in the future and not double down on pouring more concrete, widen the gas in the middle of our city. Thank you.
Chaya Gordon, Julie Starobin.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council, I'm Tiger Jessfroos, Big Stick of Pacifica. I have personally driven Highway One from about the bottom of Big Sur to the top, where it meets the 101 up north. It's a beautiful stretch of highway. I've also driven through dense LA traffic, and it's never occurred to me that what we have in Pacifica is an extreme problem, but I also admit that I'm not one of the commuters being stuck in that extreme problem, so I've often not voiced a particularly strong opinion one way or the other, because I don't know the physics of what widening could or couldn't have done. To me, it's never struck me as a big problem. But what has struck me as being really frustrating is the idea that we have this huge chunk of money, and the only way we could possibly use it is on that project. When we like have these roads, my streets that I'm walking down, driving down, and they're filled with potholes, and it would be nice if we could like claim our own destiny and use that money for something that, while I'm not sure if that would have been useful or not, I am sure that filling those potholes would be incredibly useful. It would also be useful if we were-- It would also be useful if we were able to find alternatives to the highway widening. I have said publicly that I definitely err on the side of, it would be great to explore all alternatives if highway widening would have been a good solution. And again, I wasn't convinced one way or the other, but I was convinced that pursuing other alternatives is a good idea. So, it would be great if we could claim our own destiny and utilize any of those funds to find alternatives to what would have been, and also heal the roads that are dreadfully ill in our town. So, getting back to the proposed action, I think it's a great idea for staff to work with Councilmember Martin to create a letter. One voice with the best intentions of the city at heart is awesome. That intention aided by the expertise of our city, I think, is that much better, and I hope deeply that this letter is successful and that all that money that was very strictly regulated to that one thing instead is something that we can utilize to heal the parts of our town that clearly are deeply broken and definitely need to be healed. The sooner the better, because it's not fun driving on those roads. Thank you.
Chaya Gordon, Julie Starobin, in blue, Maru, or Murra? I'm sorry if I messed your name up.
Hi, Chaya Gordon Rockaway. I'm speaking now as co-chair of Pacificans for Highway One Alternatives. PH1A recognized very early on that there were two big problems with the Caltrans plan. One was, it was, it would create a road wider than Highway 280, which seemed ludicrous here, and the other is that it wouldn't work. It would just push the bottleneck. What happened after that was that Caltrans put out comments to the community and got dozens and dozens of them back, put out a request for comments, and disregarded every suggestion and alternative that members of this community made, and there were many, and they were very thoughtful, and they were great. And Caltrans disregarded every single one of them except for build and build bigger. So, they definitely, Caltrans did not consider any alternatives, and they also did not consider any combinations of alternatives. And that also seemed particularly odd, because we all know that when the school at Reyna del Mar is not in session over the summer, the morning commute doesn't, backup doesn't happen, and we've all seen how bad that traffic signal is, and the same thing for the signal at Fassler. So, I think that with any analysis that didn't have a predetermined agenda such as building more roadway, you would realize that there were options that needed to be explored that were likely to have a good effect on the traffic congestion problem, and Caltrans wasn't willing to go in that direction. That's what brought about the lawsuit that PH1A and some other local organizations did, and the federal lawsuit. The judge invalidated Caltrans's final environmental approval because of egregious errors and misstatements. So, that was yet another really serious problem, and we've also seen the growing movement toward reducing greenhouse emissions and better public transportation. So, that's what's brought us to what we are. The letter makes some really smart suggestions. I know the council has talked about them previously, but it's obviously time to, well, actually, it's time to follow the suggestions that Sue Degree and Van Ocampo have pursued for years about intelligent traffic signals, and I want to thank the council and the staff. We're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Julie Starobin, in blue, Murra? I'm sorry. And then this, the blues is the last card I have.
I wanted to express support for the letter, whether it's Department of Public Works, a combination of Councilmember Martin's letter. It, our city council, you guys have already planned on discussing alternatives and looking at alternatives, and I'm hoping that'll be included in the letter to Caltrans and San Mateo Metropolitan Transit Authority, because we're all being very proactive. You're being proactive, and I also wanted to point out that none of the five of you ran on a platform of widening the highway. Some of you took, had no comment. Some of you, part of your platform was not widening it. So, all of you were, none of you were elected on the thought of widening the highway, just something to think about. And so, that's all. Just, I wanted to support sending the letter and getting the money for use in Pacifica for something good. Thank you.
And, okay, there is blue. Okay.
It's Murra.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Everybody says it different. It doesn't really matter. I've just wanted to express my support for a letter to Caltrans. I haven't seen either one, but I do support funds that be, to be used to explore and implement pedestrian crossing structures, more intelligent traffic signals, and other methods to facilitate traffic flow in a safe and least disruptive way, and an environmentally friendly way also. Thank you.
Okay, and I have no other yellow cards. Is there any other yellow cards? Okay, bring it back to council. John, you have a comment?
Yeah. It's sort of a little bit of a tangent. So, we were supposed to have two signals replaced with the NSYNC system, and this was supposed to happen prior to school letting out, so that NSYNC would have time to run their data for two weeks without turning on the system, just monitoring the traffic, and then turn on the system for another two weeks and actually monitor the traffic to see whether it would do any good. And so, that was the reason why we had to rush into getting just two signals instead of four signals, and the four signals would include Crespi and Lindemar. So, as it stands now, we clearly won't make it before the end of the school year, and so that is sort of moot, and, you know, I wonder what happened to that. But the, both letters favor spending the 3.75 million remaining on, among other things, more traffic lights, more intelligent traffic lights. So, maybe they'll pick up the other two. In any case, I favor either letter, and I'll await a motion from Deirdre.
Sue Varlos.
The highway isn't a Pacifica issue. It's a regional issue. We all know that when the Devil's Slide was out, we had no traffic. We were a cul-de-sac. Our traffic didn't come from here. I'd like to see options. I think Pacifica has spent all this money for all these years. We don't have any options. Why are we going to throw away this money now when we don't have any options to provide? We don't have any clear plan, so the T A will likely just say, "Too bad. We're going to give it to somebody else, even though you people have been spending your money on this for years." The lights, we approved, I thought we only approved one, but the lights that we approved, the company who's doing it said it will not work at peak times. It'll work in off-peak times. Why don't we wait? I think this letter is far too premature to send them, to just have them say, "Sorry, you don't have any money to do anything," because you don't have any alternatives, you don't have any projects, and you don't have anything studied. People ride alone in cars. People are, we've tried to get people to take buses, bike. The reason that Sam Trans cancels the buses is because they don't have the ridership. They haven't had it in forever. Why are people going to change? They're still going to be riding alone in their cars. Let's have an alternative before we just kill the money that we have in there. Thank you.
Sue Degree.
I don't see this as sending our money away. The evaluation of Caltrans that took place in 2014, which I believe is still on the website, specifically said that widening was passe. The Progress Seminar, which was just April, is sponsored by a chamber, and the comments during that and several small workshops was that widening is passe. I certainly don't think any of us is willing to throw away any money that could help deal with congestion in our city. Yes, regionally, there definitely is a problem with congestion. The intelligent traffic signals have started in Europe years ago. I stumbled upon them, I think it was 2013, and it's not synchronization. So, if you hear people say synchronization, it is not. It is intelligent traffic systems, which means it's a GPS, satellite, a few other things, radio. And the head of the Caltrans, who is the boss of the regional directors, who are the ones referred to in some of the history of the past, where Caltrans did seem to favor widening, the head of those district folks now has actually said, "The intelligent traffic systems is coming. If you're smart, you're going to get yourself in line." Why? Because funding is finite, and if you really want to be part of the intelligent traffic signals for the modern day, you need to get yourself in line. I am happy, I think I would like to hear it from Caltrans itself, but I think we now are, have our foot in the door. We are, we are in line. We are in that line because we have been allowed to use some of the money at Calera Park for those two intelligent traffic signals. Trying to be thorough about it, mention once again that south of the tunnel, the unincorporated area, for the last two years, if not three, and presently are in the process of doing whatever they can to slow down traffic. I've had conversations with members from mid-coast and with Half Moon Bay, and they agree that having a whole line of intelligent traffic signals, the four in Pacifica, and then whatever number it is in mid-coast and through Half Moon Bay, particularly past 92, would be very, very helpful rather than harmful. In going to the meeting at the T A, I wasn't sure how they were going to react when requesting the direction of using Calera money for those two traffic signals. I was happy that they talked about understanding traffic congestion, because they have it in their own towns, and they weren't feeling, I never got the sense from them as like, "Hmm, no, we want it for us. You gave up, you should have widened the road. Now, we're going to take it from you." I didn't pick that up at all from staff or from council, T A people there. They understood that waiting and having a more up-to-date process of allowing traffic to be sensed, so the sensors can tell the line of traffic and the line of waiting cars and the line of pedestrians, and can actually sense that you get, thinking of pedestrians in particular now and cyclists, that you actually get acrossed. As we know, seniors are saying, and moms with little children, the light changes before you get midway in the street. So, these intelligent traffic systems are trying to do 21st century technology and common sense. So, I don't see that we're giving away money or sacrificing money. I think we're asking for common sense technological things of the 21st century that could work and that other people should also be asking for, but that we can be greedy for this point. We have our foot in the door, and we would like to ask for this rather than for waiting. So, I would encourage that we definitely be pretty specific about asking for intelligent traffic systems, and yes, that involves traffic signals, and they're not synchronization. They are very much different. Thank you.
Any other comments? Deirdre?
So, I, I don't like to hear all the pessimism around the highway and that we're not doing things to try to manage traffic congestion. I applied for the Bike and Pedestrian Committee. I know it's not cars, but it contributes to reducing our greenhouse gases, so that work. A lot of people here are involved with working with the Climate Committee and working on better rideshare options. When I hear things like, "We don't have enough ridership." We're working on it. We're actually working on it regionally. There was a study down in Half Moon Bay. We had a presentation here the last two years. We're on their radar. They're doing a study now. We have people working on parking solutions over in Colma. So, to say that we're not doing anything is actually not true. We're doing things. It takes a little time, sure. And my mom and dad always said to me, "You don't get anything you don't ask for, so ask for it." So, that's what I'm encouraged to do here, is to ask for the reallocation of these funds, which is why I put together this letter in addition to letting the Transportation Authority and Caltrans know that the majority of Pacifica has spoken. There were at least two elections that served as a proxy, and we're interested in 21st century solutions, where you hear people begging for these traffic lights, and if we could get a few more, that would be wonderful. I'd be in favor of adding the word intelligent to the letter. There are a few other changes that I would like to suggest. One of them would be changing the word final E I R to final environmental appeal. There are some grammatical errors that definitely need fixing based on Director Ocampo's version, which I didn't see any real problem with. I'd like to see the word forefoot back in there around shoulder, just so, you know, that's our suggestion. I would also like to remove the word only from the sentence. The second paragraph, "Therefore, our city council is asking Caltrans to abandon the proposed widening of Highway One and remove it from further consideration." So, the last sentence reads, "Council strongly feels that widening Highway One is not the only solution to traffic congestion." I would rather hear, "Council strongly feels that widening Highway One is not the solution to the traffic congestion." And, and I think that's really all I have to say. So, I'd like to see, you know, direction to work with Director Ocampo and City Manager sprucing this letter up and getting it out, and I'm ready to make a motion unless...
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I'm white. Anyone else?
I'm sorry, Sue Varlos. I'm sorry.
I strongly disagree that the people in Pacifica have decided on this based on voting. I don't think they have. You personally suggested that we take this to a vote of the people. I suggested we do it soon, that what came back was, "We're never going to vote on this. We'll never have the people vote on it." I think that's pretty hypocritical. I've not even said that I thought the highway should be widened. I didn't ever say that, and that's true, but we don't have the alternatives yet, and I still think that we're, we'll be throwing away this money if we send this letter.
A question?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
To the city attorney, under such circumstances, if a letter like this were to go to the TA, I assume it's worth going, wouldn't it be protocol for them to say, rather than to say, "Okay, that's it. You lose your money," that they would, would say, "If we go this route, you're forfeiting"? Wouldn't there be a little bit of conversation or something?
You know, that's hard for me to answer because I'm not as familiar with the TA staff or their elected officials. I, I think that certainly there, there would be some communication amongst staff, and I, and I think that there already has been, which is why I believe that Director Ocampo suggested some revisions to the letter to try to assure that the funding would not be lost. But I, I can't answer your question better than that. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I just want to quickly add that that's why we want to, we recommend bringing it back to us to work with Councilmember Martin, because I want to have those discussions with, with Ben and, and have the discussions with the council member about the relationships we currently have with Caltrans and with Transportation Authority to make sure that we're structuring the letter in the most constructive way for the city.
Okay. I don't know who was first, John or Deirdre. John?
So I didn't say that we're never going to vote on, on the highway widening. What I said was if, if a, if the grassroots group wants to get enough signatures to put it on the ballot, then let them do that.
Deirdre?
So just to comment on Sue DeGruy, your question sounded a little bit as if, if we presented this letter and TA and Caltrans said, "All right, well, then we're going to take the money away." The intention of the letter, if, if the city of Pacifica was never going to widen the highway, the money was never ours to begin with, if that's how they're going to treat the funds, right? So in my opinion, if we were never going to widen the highway, then we never had the money anyway. But they've already shown to us that they're interested in working with us for alternatives. So I don't, I don't believe that the letter, like, there's no contingency, right? The purpose of the letter is to say, "The plan is dead here in Pacifica and we'd love your funds for all these other traffic mitigation issues." That's it.
Okay. Did you make a?
I can make a motion if you're...
So did, I don't think it was seconded, was it?
I don't think she made a motion.
Oh.
No, I didn't make the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't know if you had anything to say or...
No, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion for the recommended action to move staff to direct, to move to direct staff to work with Councilmember Martin to finalize the letter addressed to Caltrans and to the San Mateo Transportation Authority to redirect funds previously designated for the Calera Parkway project to other infrastructure needs in the city and include the latter for formal review and consideration by the city council at its regular meeting of June 12th, 2017.
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion is, is to meet, for you to meet with staff and then bring it back to council on June 12th?
To meet with staff, come with a formal letter for review by council, yes.
On June 12th? And now motion passes four to one. Next is we vote for economic development person. Appointment to the Economic Development Committee, we vote for one person. I think we all have the ballot in front of us, so...
That's correct. You have it up there in front of you. Honorable mayor, I'll give a brief staff report. There is one opening on the Economic Development Committee. This is due to a resignation of Peter Menard, whose term expires in October of 2020. Staff received eight applications for the Economic Development Committee. Interviews were conducted by the city council on April 25th, 2017. A list of applicants was included as attachment one. The selection process, staff recommends that council appoint one applicant for the unexpired term on the EDC using the following process. In, in order to facilitate reaching a consensus, staff will circulate to all council members a list of the applicants for the one committee vacancy, which you have in front of you. Staff will then ask each council member to place check marks next to the name they would nominate for appointment to the Economic Development Committee. And after collecting the list from the council members, staff will then tabulate the number of nominations for each applicant and report those, securing the highest number of nominations. Upon receiving the staff report, council will then make a formal motion to appoint the applicant to the Economic Development Committee.
Think you have the ballots there.
Can we, can we make a comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment. We had a lot of really good applicants and I, there's only one opening, and we did tell everyone this, but I just want to reiterate that come back because there will be more openings, not just on economic development, on other commissions. So please read your Tribune, check city website for other postings, and everybody was really good. It was a very hard decision, so...
Okay, so, yeah. So the applicant receiving the most nominations is Jonathan Mizrahi. Jonathan Mizrahi.
Okay, so we need a motion to public comment first. Is there any comments from the public? Having no cards, I close public comments. Is there a motion from the council? Sue Varral?
I move that we accept Jonathan Mizrahi as the Economic Development Committee person.
I'll second.
Okay, vote. Okay, and Jonathan is appointed five zero. Congratulations, Jonathan. I don't see anything else on the agenda, so time for adjournment.